Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed in the public accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after ten thirty P M. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. Okay, the next Planning Board regular meeting will be held August second, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P M via Zoom. Yamalat roll call, please.
Mister Alpert. Mister Cardoza.
Present.
Mister Waino.
Here.
Mister Jensen. Mister Jensen.
Here.
Mister Klein is not present. Mister Smiraldo.
Here.
Council President Williams.
Present.
Mayor McCartney.
Present.
Mister Walks.
Present.
Chairman Bagow.
Here, thank you.
I'm so sorry, Mister Morgan, I know he's here.
Uh, I saw Mister Morgan before. Mister Morgan's here.
Yep.
Yes, okay, he's.
Mister Cardoza.
Yes. Yes. Crestmont Country Club Draft Resolution. I make a motion, we approve Crestmont Country Club Draft Resolution with conditions. Do I have a second?
Go move, Mister Chairman.
Mister Guarino, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
Mister Waino.
Yes.
Mister Morgan.
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo.
I cannot vote on those recused.
Yes, yes, Mister Woods either. Mister Cardoza.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. Motion carries. I make a motion that we approve the Turtleback Zoo Wellness Center Resolution. Uh, the project is not inconsistent with the Township Master Plan. Do I have a second?
Go move.
Second, uh, Mister Smiraldo, seconds.
Mister Maraldo. Mister Alpert.
Yes.
Mister Waino.
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo.
Yes.
Mister Jensen. Mister Jensen.
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Mister Cardoza.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Make Chairman Bagow.
Yes, motion carries. Miss McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
And I see Ms. Laney, who is here for Mister Hess?
Mister Jordan?
Oh, okay, sorry, right in the middle of the screen. Okay, if you please would raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, the application we have before us is PB twenty-one dash oh one, West Orange Plaza Block one fifty-two dot oh one, lots what, fourteen forty-five and fourteen forty-five dot oh five Zone P dash C slash R dash five two thirty-five Prospect Avenue. Improvements to West Orange Plaza Center with addition of new buildings. Mister Mees for the applicant.
You're on mute, Mister Mees.
How's that?
Fantastic.
All right, thank you, Mister Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. Greg Mees, attorney for the applicant, West Orange Plaza, a New Jersey partnership. You know, as a land use attorney, it's not all that frequent where you get to present an application that you think is going to be an excellent addition to a community. Uh, but tonight, I really have a pleasure of introducing an application that I think has so many benefits to the community. Uh, that I think when you hear the presentation from our professionals tonight, uh, and study the plan, I think you'll agree that the project is a very good one. And the benefits are both physical in that you can see the aesthetic improvements, uh, but I think it's also a benefit to the quality of life for the residents of West Orange. In terms of aesthetic improvements, there will be a complete, uh, new shopping center visually. There's new storefronts, there's new signage, uh, the landscaping is going to be substantially enhanced. There'll be tree-lined boulevards to bring you into the center from Prospect. And also, there's enhanced pedestrian connectivity throughout the center. Enhanced lighting, uh, in addition of buildings that connect the center and give the center a sense of place that frankly is missing today. And right now, you enter the center from Prospect, you see the Mavis Building, the automotive use. Uh, the proposal is to eliminate the Mavis use and transform that building into either a restaurant, a medical, or a retail space. So when you enter the center, it will have a more upscale feel to it. The addition of all of the retail, uh, space, possible restaurant space and service space will allow the residents of West Orange greater shopping opportunities, uh, as well as additional employment opportunities and opportunities for the local entrepreneurs. Because as you'll see from the plan, although we have the Target and Whole Foods as the anchors, uh, what we also have done is added, uh, and the design intent was to add many different size spaces to accommodate different uses in the center. And as Mister Delaney, the engineer, will testify, to the center was really designed to be the right mix of space, parking, and aesthetic improvements, including landscaping and outdoor gathering spaces. There's a variance for parking, but we think it's the right thing to ask for, um, so we can change the center from an old kind of tired strip center into really a sense of community for, for West Orange. And the improvements that we're proposing not only will, uh, benefit the, those coming to the, the space, but also Target, and we'll talk about this a little bit tonight, with its fulfillment center or the last mile, uh, delivery service, it'll even benefit those that prefer to shop from home. And the improvements will help the center economically. It'll ma- make the center much more leasable, and it will attract the kind of quality tenants that I think West Orange, uh, would like to see. Certainly, the ownership would, would like to see, and we think that having Target come in and having this additional space that we're proposing, uh, will attract those kind of tenants and really be a benefit to the community. And we have several witnesses, uh, to review the, uh, proposal. Uh, frankly, we can go into as much detail as any board member would like to, uh, get into. Um, and we'll, uh, start with the engineer because Mister, uh, Montoro, the project architect, is out of the country. Um, and although I know you would like to see from the architect, the, the building designs, uh, and that space, we'll have to save that for the next meeting, but Sean Delaney, who I think you know, uh, is here tonight to begin by giving the board an overview of the center and then get into some details as to the design concepts, uh, and the improvements proposed for the shopping center.
Mister Mees, I hate to interrupt. Uh, there was one administrative, two administrative things I wanted to do before you get started. I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Miss Laney is going to just put on the record that we had, the board has jurisdiction, um, to hear this application under the law. Miss Laney.
Sure, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, as you're aware, and for the benefit of the public, uh, who may not have come to other meetings, I am filling in for Paul Graygill, who is the board's regular planner. Uh, and I spoke with Paul, uh, about this jurisdictional issue, which was raised by, um, a resident, I believe, Ms. Ruten. Um, and, and Paul did address this in his planner memo that was revised on June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but the question was regarding the drive-up window and, um, if the fact that it was, you know, front yard where it's not permitted, if that constituted a conditional use variance, which would be in front of the zoning board. And I spoke with Paul, and he drafted this, the ordinance, um, which is section twenty-five dash eleven, uh, point one four. Um, it's in the supplemental provisions for non-residential districts in the ordinance, and Paul indicated adamantly, as the drafter of this, um, section on the, on the drive-up windows, that these were standards that were never meant to rise to the level of a conditional use, um, that they're standards for permitted accessory use, and any deviations are subject to C-bulk variances, which are properly in front of the planning board. Um, and he also noted that the way the land use ordinance in West Orange is structured, conditional uses along with the conditional use standards are in an entirely different section of the ordinance, all sort of, you know, clumped together in, in an entirely different air section, separate and apart from the general uh, regulations where the drive-in window standards, uh, reside within the ordinance. Um, and he also noted that other applications that sought deviations from this section of the ordinance were seen by this board and treated as C-bulk variances, um, rather than D-variances before the zoning board. And so, in summary, um, you know, he felt that this application is certainly in front of the, properly in front of the correct board, which is the, the planning board.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to have that on the record. I'm sorry, Mister Mees, go right ahead. I thought that was important to get that out there right now.
Yeah, I agree with that analysis. The, the section cited specifically states that, uh, the drive-up windows are permitted as an accessory use for certain, uh, other principal users. It doesn't, it doesn't talk about it being a conditional use, uh, only that the, uh, uh, and I think it's probably a poor choice of words, just to say the drive-up has to meet certain conditions. We are seeking some variances uh, from that, but it, it is not a conditional use. It's an accessory use.
Okay, thank you, Mister Mees. Thank you, Miss Laney. You're, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Uh, our first witness is Sean Delaney, and, uh, I guess, Mister Delaney, you'll have to raise your right arm and be sworn in by Miss McGovern.
Yes, we're, there's, okay, thank you. Uh, Mister Delaney, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please put your name on the record and spell your last name, and if you could give your business address.
Absolutely. My name is Sean Delaney. Delaney is spelled D E L A N E Y, and I'm with Petri Engineering, and we are located at one fifty-five Passaic Avenue in Fairfield, New Jersey.
And Mister Delaney, would you please give your background and experience in the field of civil engineering?
Absolutely. So for the benefit of the board, I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology in two thousand and seventeen, uh, with my bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I've also recently completed my MBA through Rutgers University. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Uh, and I've been working with Petri Engineering for over six years now, uh, during which time I worked primarily onsite design and infrastructure improvements, um, including this project, several others in West Orange itself and the surrounding area. Um, earlier this year, I was elevated to partner, and I've testified before numerous, um, zoning boards and planning boards in the past, including this board.
Thank you. I would offer Mister Delaney as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Uh, unless any members of the planning board have a question, uh, we accept Mister Laney. Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Laney, your license is up to date in the state of New Jersey. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we accept Mister Laney as a civil engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey, knowing this application. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Tony, would you just start by giving the board a, uh, overview of the project? And in doing so, is he able to share his screen?
Believe that I am. Can everybody see that?
And if you could just orient the board to the location of the center, I'm sure everybody knows, but, uh, it's good to just have that in mind, how it's laid out currently, and then we can talk about what's proposed.
Also, because this is very small, if you could identify the document in terms of, uh, if it's one we have in the board's package, the, the page number.
Absolutely. So the sheet that I'm looking at right now is an aerial image, um, showing the West Orange Plaza and the surrounding neighborhood. This is a blow-up of the aerial image that we include on our title sheet. Um, and for this presentation, we label it as figure one. Um, so the subject property, West Orange Plaza, is located at the corner of Eagle Rock Avenue and Prospect.
Sorry, Sean, before you, before you start, just so, if, if the, the document's already been submitted, this has been submitted as part of the site plan. Should we mark this?
No, I don't think it's necessary. I just want the record to be clear. Uh, if we have it in the package and it was, it's on the agenda because we posted everything online. Um, anybody who wants to follow along can go to the correct sheet and the record will be, be clear. You know, we don't need to re-market anything that might be new, of course, we'll mark.
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so again, the, so we tell that twice, application is the West Orange Plaza, which is located at the corner of Eagle Rock Avenue and Prospect Avenue, um, in West Orange, New Jersey. So just to orient the board on these plans that are in front of you this evening, Prospect Avenue runs in a generally north and south direction, um, which is going across the bottom of the page here, left to right. So north is going to be plan right. Uh, Eagle Rock Avenue runs primarily east and west, so up and down the page, and all of the plan sheets that we'll be looking at this evening will have this same orientation, so it should, should really keep it nice and easy for everybody. Um, so Prospect, so going across Prospect Avenue, we have the existing Eagle Rock Reservation, um, which is it within the R-one zone um, to the south of the site. So again, it's plan left. There are various commercial buildings along Eagle Rock Avenue, uh, which are all contained within the B-two zone. And the pocket of the site on the southwest corner is the existing Mayfair Farms property, um, and this is also within that same B-two zone. Zooming out a little bit to the west of the property and the north of the property are a series of residential homes and developments, um, and these are all located within the R-six zone. The subject property itself is actually split-zoned with the front portion of the shopping center, uh, which contains the building itself and all of the parking lots, uh, within the PC or the planned commercial zone. And the rear of the property is within that R-six zone. Uh, just for the benefit of the board, all the proposed improvements that we'll be talking about this evening are solely contained within the PC zones. So from here, I'll go over to a copy of our existing conditions plan. Uh, this is essentially a copy of the survey that was submitted to the board, and it has been colorized to make the nice presentation a little bit easier and clearer. So the subject property itself is irregularly shaped and contains a total of thirty-two point six seven acres. Again, the front portion of the site is what's developed, um, as the shopping center, and the rear portion of the site within that R-six zone is primarily wooded, and it does contain, uh, small pockets of wetlands within. The developed portion of the shopping center contains, uh, three large builds, sorry, three buildings and a large parking lot. The main building, which is shown here, is a light brown hatch. Contains three separate levels. So the upper level, which is the main level, is probably the level that we're all most familiar with, and this contains the existing Whole Foods and the former Kmart space. As we go to the north of the building, the site steps down a little bit, and we have another level down, what I'll refer to as the mid-level of the main building. And this is where the former Retro Fitness space was. Um, continuing north again and going down another level, we have what I'll refer to as the lower level. This is a small series of retail stores that exist, uh, at the north end of this, of the storefronts, sorry, north end of the building. In the northeast corner of the property, we have the existing Mavis Building that Mister Mees mentioned earlier. Um, this building is pretty close to Prospect Avenue, um, and the residential properties to the north, it has a front yard setback of thirty-one point three feet and a side yard setback of ten point one feet. Going down to the southeast corner of the property, we have the existing Verizon store, which is tucked in near the corner of Prospect Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue. The front yard setback off of Prospect Avenue is one hundred and thirteen point eight feet and a forty-three point four foot setback, uh, is existing from Eagle Rock Avenue. So the parking lot itself occupies the, the eastern portion of the property and is generally located in front of the main building. Um, and it stretches all the way to the north and around the back of the building to provide parking. Throughout this entire parking lot, there are one thousand four hundred and seventy-six existing spaces, the majority of, majority of which, uh, are mostly unused in the shopping center's typical operations right now. Throughout the shopping center, you can see small pockets of these green landscaped areas, um, which contain a couple existing trees on the property within those parking limits. Accessing this site today, we have three primary entrances and exits to the site. The first one is the signalized intersection, uh, coming off of Eagle Rock Avenue. Again, this is a signalized intersection that allows for both right and left-hand turns into the shopping center, um, and it does have a dedicated left turn into the center. Now, exiting the shopping center, we have a dedicated right turn lane, and we have a second lane that provides straight, um, through movements and left turn movements out of the shopping center. Going over to Prospect Avenue, we have two existing entrance and exits to the site. Um, the first one, the southernmost one um, is an unsignalized intersection that provides left and right turns into the shopping center, uh, but it only provides for right-hand turns out of the shopping center. Going to the north closer to the Mavis Building, uh, we have the third entrance to the site. Um, again, this allows for both left and right turns into the shopping center. And it allows for left and right turns out of the shopping center as well. We also have an existing slip ramp, which is on the southbound lane of Prospect Avenue, and that provides access to the shopping center. From a topographic and drainage perspective, the site generally slopes from the southeast corner of the site to the northwest corner of the site, um, with grades ranging in just the parking lot itself from a high point of five hundred and ninety, and that's near the existing Verizon building, to a low of five hundred and thirty, and that's in that northwest corner of the parking lot. Um, throughout the parking lot, there are sections that are relatively flat. Those are closer to the main building, and there are sections of the park lot that are relatively steep today. There are two main drainage systems that go through this existing parking lot. Um, the first system is really a county system, um, and it's shown kind of running through the middle of the parking lot here where my mouse is. This system actually drains, uh, the county reservation across the street, uh, drains a portion of the Prospect Avenue right of way, um, and it only drains a, a little bit of the existing parking lot. Ultimately, the system discharges into an existing ditch, um, just behind the property to the north and behind that residential, um, development. The second drainage system that exists today runs along the frontage of the existing main building. Um, it runs along that frontage, it turns to the west and eventually back to the north where it discharges, um, through a new outfall structure that was recently created. And again, this discharges into that ditch that runs, the man-made ditch that runs behind the residential development. This system is recently upgraded and modified, um, in anticipation of this forthcoming development. And we understand that in the, historically speaking, there had been some drainage issues along the northern property line. Um, and before we came in with this application, we wanted to make sure that that was addressed. Um, also, some of the pipes that are running through, through this shopping center were corrugated metal pipe, which had, were installed many, many years ago, and had since, since corroded. So all of those issues have been corrected. So now we're going to take a look at the proposed development. What we're looking at here is our overall layout plan. This was included in our site plan set and is labeled as Sheet SP two. The proposed plan calls for the complete overhaul and modernization of the existing shopping center. These, the plans for the new, for the new West Orange Plaza include the construction of three buildings onsite, in addition to the existing Verizon building, um, near the corner of Prospect Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue, and the conversion of the Mavis Building to a non-automative use. Most notably, this application also includes the inclusion, um, of Target as the new anchor tenant, which will be within that former Kmart space. To complement these new buildings and, and future tenants, we're proposing to reconstruct the existing parking lot completely. This new parking lot will include reconfiguring all three entrances into the center, the elimination of that previously mentioned slip ramp, um, repaving and restriping of the entire parking lot, um, and overall improving vehicular and pedestrian circulation throughout the site. The parking lot and the proposed improvements have been designed with sustainability in mind, and we understand that that's a key component, uh, that the West Orange Planning Board looks for in their applications that come before them. So it's that we're proposing electric vehicle charging stations throughout the shopping center. We're also proposing compact car parking spaces throughout the center. Together, these two features, uh, will encourage the use of smaller and more efficient cars and the use of electric vehicles. But most notably, the most significant sustainability measure that we're incorporating, uh, is the inclusion of landscaped islands throughout, throughout the parking lot and landscape boulevard entrances to give the, the center an upscale appearance. These landscape, uh, sorry, these landscape islands will dramatically increase the amount of onsite landscaping and will redor- reduce stormwater runoff. By reducing the amount of asphalt onsite, will reduce the heat island effect caused by the existing massive uninterrupted parking lot, again, that exists today. Um, we will also be replacing all the lighting fixtures with new LED fixtures. So going over to our detailed layout plan, which zooms.
Just before, before you get there, uh, I know that you've indicated the target is going to take over the Kmart space, and just for the records clear, it also takes over the old Dollar Tree and Staples, uh, as well. And then we, for shorthand, we say it takes over Kmart, but I just wanted the record to be clear on that.
Thank you. What we're looking at here is a copy of the detailed layout plan, also included in our site plan application set. The color is for its nice presentation, and it's labeled as Sheet SP four. So we're going to start on the northern end of the site. We're going to work our way south through the site and eventually around the back of the building. So again, starting on this northern end, we're proposing to construct two new outbuildings, uh, which are referred to on our plans as Buildings A and Buildings B. These buildings have been designed to take advantage of the generally unused portions of the parking lot that exist at this northern end and give the center a sense of place and provide for more shopping and employment options to the community. Significantly, they provide for a connection of the existing Mavis Building with the main building, essentially completing and integrating the shopping center as one. Building A, the western building proposed along the northern end, has a footprint of fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-four square feet, while Building B, the eastern building, has a smaller footprint of eight thousand and fifty-five square feet. Each of these buildings will be one-story in height and will only have a maximum height of thirty-five feet, which is the maximum permitted height in the zone. These buildings include different size units to incorporate, to accommodate small local retailers, uh, and this will be discussed further by the architect. These two buildings have been designed with large sidewalks along the front edge of the stores and a large courtyard between Buildings A and B. Um, this courtyard will also include landscaped areas. In addition to constructing these two new buildings, the proposed plan calls for the existing Mavis Building to be renovated and convert it to a retail, medical, or restaurant use.
Uh, Sean, could you indicate why the, the end of Building A has been turned towards the, uh, southwest?
Absolutely. So the building was turned to, to provide that sense, the sense of belonging, the sense of connectivity and direct people who are walking along the frontage to that mid-level of the main building.
And there'll be a sidewalk in front of both at a designated crosswalk between?
Correct, yep, there's a side, there's a walkway that goes along both buildings. Um, you can either come straight across and go across the sidewalk, and that will bring you up to the mid-level of the main building, um, where you can continue down the sidewalk, and this will bring you to that lower level, since they are separated quite significantly by grade. So to accommodate these two new buildings and the renovated Mavis Building, we're proposing, sorry, lost my place there. Uh, sorry, we're proposing to reconstruct the existing parking lot in this area. Um, the first step in reconstructing this parking lot will be the removal of that slip lane that I mentioned. Uh, we're going to be realigning the existing entrance off of Prospect Avenue. And we're going to be shifting this entrance to the south, and what that has allowed us to do is provide a larger parking field in front of the A, B, and Mavis Buildings. Um, this parking field will also be used to service the mid-level of the main building itself. So this new entrance will be a boulevard, boulevard-style entrance with large landscaped islands on either. So this new entrance will be a boulevard boulevard style entrance with large landscape islands on either side. And a smaller landscape island that runs through the middle of it. This entrance has been designed to maintain the existing traffic light and the existing ingress and egress movements. Dedicated lanes will be provided um, for left and right turns into, I'm sorry, out of the shopping center. As you enter the site, you can continue straight to the main building, um, or you can make a right. As you enter the site and this will bring you right in front of the B and the Mavis buildings. Throughout the parking lot. There will be proposed landscaped islands, and we're also proposing twenty electric vehicle charging stations within this parking field. And ten ADA part, uh, ten ADA parking spaces have also been spread throughout this. Portion of the parking lot to provide ADA accessible access to all of these three buildings. To the rear of Buildings A and B, we're proposing a one-way service drive. Which will accommodate deliveries to the stores and the collection of refuse. Uh, to service these three buildings, we're proposing four new refuse enclosures. And the engineering letter I issued by Mister Hess, he asked if the spacing and the amount of the dumpsters that we're providing here. Is sufficient to support these two new buildings and the Mavis building. Um, after reviewing these buildings in detail, we believe that we have provided sufficient refuse and with sufficient spacing. Uh, however, you know, we understand that it really comes down to just exactly what the tenant mix is gonna be. For instance, a restaurant may have a higher refuse load than a gift shop or another retail type establishment. And because of that, we've provided for additional areas in the rear of the building where refuse could be added in the future. Um, should that be required by our tenants. Some of those spaces are would be behind suite A four tucked into. The portion of the drive aisle, um, just beyond the stairs. And you could even include it just be another one just behind suite A six. And these can all be added without interfering with the movements um, within that drive aisle and block blocking any access. Um, so a- again, Buildings A and B really help to create a sense of place and community for the center. But they do require a few variances for their construction. First, they require variance for the front yard setback. The proposed buildings have a setback of one hundred and thirty-five point nine feet and two hundred and sixty-eight point three feet for Buildings A and B respectively. And this is where three hundred feet is required. These buildings also require a variance for the minimum distance between buildings. We're proposing fifty-four point two feet between the Mavis building and Building B. Thirty-eight feet between Buildings A and B, and finally ninety point three feet between Building A and the main building. And this is where one hundred and fifty feet is required for the spacing between buildings in this zone. Um, one other variance that we're seeking for these buildings is the side yard setbacks. We're proposing a side yard setback for Building A of fifty point seven feet. And sixty feet for Building B, and this is where one hundred feet is required. Looking at the plans on the screen, we can see there's this red dashed line that runs through through the shopping center, and what this represents. Let me zoom out, the line running along Prospect Avenue in parallel to its frontage represents the required three hundred foot. Front yard setback. And the red dashed line running along the northern portion of the of the property and paralleling that line represents even a hundred foot setback from the northern property line it's required. And you can see here that from an engineering perspective, you know, complying with that setback is not practical. Uh, if we were to shift these buildings up, we would have to move the buildings back about a hundred and fifty feet. And they would essentially be attached to the main building, which would just create one larger. Uh, belt building mass which defeats what the intent or we're trying to do with smaller buildings and less massing. By shifting the buildings to the south as well to accommodate the one hundred foot setback, we would also be leaving a significant amount of pavement behind the building. Um, that would otherwise be unused. As Mister Mees pointed out earlier, the proposed layout includes a sidewalk from Prospect Avenue. From Prospect Avenue, along the fr- the south side of the Mavis building. Along the storefronts of Buildings A and B, and this all. Provides pedestrian access again to that mid level of the main building. So continuing south through the shopping center.
Before you, before you uh, leave there. Um, there's a variance for the space in between the two buildings. Uh, that could be eliminated just by attaching the buildings, correct?
It could be eliminated by attaching the buildings, correct? Uh, but again, that would just create one large massive building and defeat, you know, breaking it up and creating smaller massing there, which is what we're trying to accomplish.
And in the intent here is to try to create a a gathering space and hopefully an outdoor dining space. For either one or two restaurants that would have joined that courtyard, is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so continuing south through the shopping center where we arrive at the proposed target space, which again will occupy the former Kmart space. And Staples and Dollar Tree. We're proposing to reconstruct the existing vestibule that would access the Kmart space. Now, when Kmart occupied the space, it had doors on either end of the vestibules, northern and southern ends. Target wishes to reconstruct this vestibule and provide access out the front of it. Um, in order to accommodate access out the front, we're proposing to expand the sidewalk there to provide a large pedestrian gathering area. Um, and then as you continue south. Sorry, east through the parking lot down the page, we're also providing a scored concrete crosswalk which will be thirty feet wide. Um, and just as wide as the entrance, and this will give the pedestrians a sense of space and cars. Uh, a sense of awareness that they're approaching the main entrance that they should slow down. We're proposing stop signs on either side of this, again, to help protect protect pedestrians accessing the site. Um, and of course, this new vest, this new vestibule will be protected by Target's um, signature red spherical ballers that they have in front of most of their stores. The parking field in front of Target. Uh, will accommodate, will include a customer pickup area, and this is located just to the north of that new main entrance. Um, these spaces have a sidewalk running down the middle of them. Um, and each of these spaces are separated by loading zones, which will allow Target employees to safely and easily navigate. To the customer's car and load their items. The parking field will also contain twelve electric vehicles, charging stations, um, all placed directly in front of the Target space. In addition, six ADA spaces are also proposed. Directly in front of Target's main entrance. Directly across from the new Target, the plans also call for the construction of a third building, which we label on our plans as Building C. This building will have a footprint of eight thousand four hundred square feet and like Buildings A and B will only be one story in height. This building will be a little bit shorter and have a maximum height of twenty-eight feet, again, we're thirty-five in the maximum allowed. This building will include the first of two drive-throughs that we're proposing on the site. Now, we understand that the owners are currently negotiating with a quick casual restaurant for Building C. Um, and. This goes well with the drive-through that we're proposing. This drive-through has the capacity to queue up to ten cars without affecting any movements within the remainder of the parking lot. Um, which is a signi- significant amount of cars, standard um, industry for a use like this would be. Queuing for eight cars. We're proposing a loading area to the south side of Building C, and this loading area will be screened on the southern and western sides. By a screen wall, um, which has been designed to match. The facade of the building and blends seamlessly into the building, Mister Montoro will go over that. To accommodate the new Target space and the proposed Building C, we're also proposing to reconstruct the southerly entrance off of Prospect Avenue. The new entrance, like the northern one, will be a boulevard style entrance with large landscape islands on either side and a small landscape island down the center. And I have to apologize on this plan here, the center island is shown as a gray hatch, but that will be landscaped. Um, the ingress and egress movements will remain the same, only right-hand turns will be allowed out of the shopping center. And we will also be maintaining the existing left turn lane on Prospect Avenue into the center. Um, currently, for those of you who are familiar with the shopping center itself, making a right turn into the center. From Prospect Avenue southbound into this entrance is rather tight, the radius on the curve there is tight and that movement can be quite difficult, and we're proposing. To enlarge that radius and making that movement a little bit safer and a little bit more, it'll be easier for cars entering the site. A few other highlights. Fewer highlights in this parking field include compact spaces, which we're proposing directly across um, from Building C. And they run up the page towards the existing Target space. And we're also including six additional E V spaces located at the northern end of this parking field near Building C. And we're also providing ADA spaces directly in front of Building C. Additionally, a sidewalk will be installed which will connect Building C with the main building itself. And the sidewalk runs right through the center of this parking field and up to the Target. Uh, Mister Hess's letter indicated that perhaps an additional sidewalk should be installed in this area. To provide access from these angled parking spaces to the north of Building C to the sidewalk that exist is proposed in front of Building C. Uh, we agree with his, we agree with his comment, I apologize. We agree, we agree with his comment and will work to include that sidewalk into any plans, um. And any any final site plans should the board ultimately act in favor of this application. So continuing to the south, we're proposing in addition to the existing Verizon building itself. And we refer to this addition on our plans as Building D. Building D is a one-story building with a footprint of five thousand five hundred and two square feet. This building will have, will be one story tall and will have a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Um, again, which is in conformance of the maximum building height. Building has been designed to include a large pedestrian area along the frontage of the stores. So in this case, that's the northern side of the store, so facing in towards the parking lot. Uh, a series of ramps and stairs will be installed which will help make up the difference in grade from this new proposed building to the existing parking lot. This building will also include the second of two drive-throughs on the site. And this drive-through will have sufficient space to allow for the queuing of approximately five cars, um, without interfering with any traffic flow in the parking lot. Mister Hess has recommended, again in his engineering review letter, that we provide additional signage at this drive-through indicating that left turns are not allowed. Uh, we agree with his comment and again, we'll work to incorporate that into our plans. On this eastern side of the building, we're proposing a new refuse enclosure. Which will, like the other refuse enclosures on site, will be designed to match the building facade and will have attractive gates along the front. Um, beyond this building, we're also proposing to reconstruct this parking field as well. So that's the parking field in front of the new building D and in front of the existing Whole Foods. We're also proposing to upgrade the existing intersection that. Comes into the site from Eagle Rock Avenue, this upgraded intersection will maintain the same movements into the site. While also making these movements safer. Uh, as many of you are aware, the existing entrance off Eagle Rocket Avenue is a sea of asphalt and it really provides no clear sense of direction. Uh, there's a lot of cars going in different directions and pedestrians, you know, crossing throughout. This new entrance will be narrowed down and we're proposing a new elongated island as you come into the site. This will help to control cars entering the site, give them a sense of belonging and also help to slow them down and separate them from our pedestrians. Um, one of the most notable features of this new. Of this reconfigured entrance and exit is that we're providing providing one left turn. And then we're providing another lane that will also accommodate left turns and through movements to cross the street as well. And we're still maintaining that same right-hand turn only lane. Going around the back of the existing shopping center. Uh, we're proposing to renovate and expand the three loading docks, uh, which will service the proposed Target. Three additional loading docks, um. Will also be constructed and that's this darker hatch attached to the building and where we'll be renovating the three existing to make them. More conforming um, with modern designs. To accommodate the new trucks going into these loading docks and provide for better and safer movements, we're going to be expanding the pavement in this area. Um, it's worth noting that this is the only portion of the entire shopping center that will be, we will be expanding outside of the existing uh, developed areas. Finally, we're proposing three potential future loading docks. Slightly further to the north, and these have been designed and included in these plans to provide for flexibility. As Target builds out their space at the lower level, which we'll speak about more, I believe, this evening. So these loading docks will require variance for the rear yard setback, uh, these loading docks which are only one story in height. Will have a rear at setback of thirty-nine point six feet or seventy-five feet is required. While we're on the topic of loading docks, there's also a variance for the number of loading docks provided throughout the shopping center as a whole. So according to the ordinance, we're required to provide thirty-four loading spaces. And we're only providing twelve throughout the shopping center. However, we feel that there is a a sufficient number of loading docks, given the size, the configuration and the expectancy of the tents that. Um, that will be in the shopping center. And we also know that some of the loading will take place outside, uh, which does require a variance in this particular zone. But we feel that the locations provided are safe, adequate, and well screened from the public right of way. Finally, continuing to the north. Will also be reconstructing the parking area in the back. Um, we're providing landscape islands here, and this will provide parking and access to that lower level that we talked about. Zooming back out onto on the shopping center as a whole, just to wrap that all up. Based on the improvements in the described, we're removing a significant amount of the existing asphalt and we're. Providing approximately one acre of new landscaped islands on site, so it's a significant increase in the landscaped islands. The overall shopping center will include one thousand two hundred and four parking spaces, this is inclusive of the E V credit that we're allowed. And although variance is requested for the number of parking spaces, we feel the number is adequate and consistent with the I T E regulations. Uh, we also believe that we've achieved the correct balance of parking. Uh, landscaping pedestrians and pedestrian sidewalks, given the square footage of the center, uh, and its vi- its expected vibrancy. So new ADA compliant parking has been strategically placed throughout the site. We're actually providing more ADA parking than what is required by ordinance. We're providing forty-eight E V parking spaces all scattered throughout the site. Um, in strategic locations, there will be thirty-six compact car parking spaces, again strategically located throughout the site. Pedestrian access and connectivity was a big focus of this development. And we're providing for new sidewalks for the entire length of Prospect Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue, majority of which does not exist today. These pedestrian walkways will also link in with the. Buildings proposed on site and really pro- provide pedestrian access throughout the entire shopping center itself. Uh, we also people, we are also proposing bicycle storage racks throughout, again, in strategic locations throughout the shopping center. And if it's okay with you, Mister Mees, I'm gonna go over to our grading and drainage plan.
Sounds good.
So I'm gonna try to talk about the grading drainage utilities fairly briefly here, so overall, the proposed grading drainage has been designed to mimic the existing patterns on site. Again, that's sloping from the southeast corner to the northwest corner of the site. Starting at the south corner of the site, Building D. The parking lot in this area will remain roughly the same grade that it is today, um, with they'll be milling and paving and replacing it as is. Since that portion of the parking lot, um, does drop off as you go to the north and we're expanding the Mavis building, sorry, the Verizon building out. And maintaining that first floor, um, there is a difference in grade between that first floor and the parking lot. And that's why we're providing the the series of stairs and walls. Along the frontage, for the most part, those walls only reach a maximum height of four feet. But there are a couple instances specifically right at the northwest corner of that building where that wall does reach a maximum height of seven feet. Sliding to the north through the shopping center directly in front of Target, we're proposing to regrade this area to accommodate those new landscaped islands and their new entrance. Um, and generally speaking, these grades will remain similar to the conditions they are today. As we go over to Building C, that portion of the parking lot gets a little bit steeper in the existing conditions. And we're proposing to fill that area, raise it up and create a flatter parking field through that. Area in order to accommodate Building C and its surrounding parking. The landscaped islands that we're proposing along this new entrance. Uh, will act as that grade break with the grade changing, you know, several feet between the parking field itself and this new drive aisle. Again, continuing to the north. Again, continuing to the north um toward buildings A and B, these buildings will be slightly elevated above the existing grade in this area. This part, portion of the parking lot will be regraded um to provide flatter parking spaces, more consistent with modern design. Going around to the back of the main building, we're proposing the loading dock additions for Target. Um since we are expanding that pavement area out to allow for the loading movements into and out of those loading spaces. The, there is an existing hill along that back property line. In order to expand that pavement outward, need to put in a retaining wall to accommodate that change in grade. This retaining wall varies in height from zero feet all up to its maximum of thirteen and a half feet. Uh I just wanna point out, you know, this wall is very close to the property line, you know, it's only setback one foot. But it can be constructed without having to go into the adjacent property. And this can be done by using sheet piles, um and again, the wall is specifically designed for that. Another option that I understand the ownership has been exploring is the possibility of a construction easement onto the adjacent property to help build that wall as well. But again, it can be built either way. Now for drainage, as I mentioned earlier, there are two primary systems on site and we'll be maintaining and upgrading even further those two existing systems. So all new storm sewers are proposed throughout the shopping center. And this is because we're providing all these landscaped islands. So these work to break up the water flowing across the parking lot. Since we're breaking those flows up with proposed new inlets in order to capture that runoff. Overall, based on the reduction in the amount of impervious on site, our Stormwater Management Report was able to demonstrate that the flows leaving the site in the proposed conditions will actually be lower than the flows in the existing conditions. Again, so the peak flows and the volume of water leaving the site in proposed conditions will be lower than existing. Because we're generating less runoff in the proposed conditions, no detention basins or other B M Ps um are required as a part of this development. Additionally, the reduction in motor vehicle surface on site means that no water quality measures are required either. Going over to our utility plan, again, provided in the site plan set and marked as sheet S P seven. We're proposing all new utilities throughout the shopping center to service these new outbuildings um and the addition to the Verizon space. These utilities will include gas, water, which is both fire and domestic, uh electric services and sanitary sewer services. We understand that historically the center has had some issues with their existing sanitary sewer lines and we're proposing to to reconstruct a large portion of those sanitary sewer lines um and upsize them to provide for uh better sanitary sewer service to the site. Now going over to our last sheet for the evening, our lighting plan. And this was included in site plan set and labeled as sheet S P eight. The proposed lighting plan calls for the installation of all new L E D fixtures throughout the entire shopping center. The majority of these fixtures will be standard pole-mounted fixtures with a mounting height of twenty-five feet. These fixtures will mostly be placed within the parking field itself and the, because of that, they will be placed on a concrete pedestal. Each of these pedestals is three feet in height and will help to protect these poles um from cars in the parking lot. Um and just to clarify, that three-foot pedestal is included in the twenty-five-foot mounting height, so it's not in addition to. We're also proposing building mounted fixtures with a mounting height of eighteen feet along the rear of buildings A and B to to illuminate those service drives. And we're also providing for eight, sorry, building mounted lights at eighteen feet along the rear of the main building as well. Again, to light that loading docks behind the building. This lighting plan has been designed to adequately light the entire parking lot and all the existing and proposed walkways um through the shopping center. The lighting plan was also designed to produce a maximum lighting level of zero point three foot candles at the side and rear property lines. So again, that's for the northern property line that abuts the residential development and the rear property line that abuts the existing Mayfair Farms property. And zero point three foot candles is the maximum allowed by the ordinance. While there, while we were able to meet the required lighting levels um at the side and rear property lines, we did exceed the zero point three foot candle minimum along the property frontage on Prospect Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue. Um and this was done intentionally and it was done in order to provide attention, additional lighting for the new sidewalks that we're proposing along the frontage of this site. I would also like to note that there's a, a small error on our title sheet. The title sheet indicates that the minimum illumination in the parking lot is zero point zero foot candles. Um this should have read zero point three foot candles. This only occurs at the extreme corners of the site. This is below the minimum allowable of one point five foot candles in the West Orange ordinance. Uh however, we're providing for an average of two, an average of over two foot candles throughout the entire parking area. And we believe that that is the intent of the zoning ordinance. Finally, these fixtures will all have a mounting height of twenty-five feet, as I mentioned. And this will require a waiver uh because eighteen feet is the maximum height allowed. From an engineering perspective, you know, we believe this waiver can be granted for this particular site. Given the size of the shopping center, if we were to use shorter mounting heights, um it requires significantly more poles throughout the shopping center. Uh it should also be noted that the existing poles on site are approximately thirty feet in height. Um so the proposed poles will be lower than those existing. Finally, the lighting fixtures will be placed on a dusk to tie, dusk to dawn timer. Um and the fixtures will be dimmed down to security level lighting at night when the center is not being used. Um and the applicant will have to coordinate that exact timing with their existing tenants and future tenants um in order to provide lighting for them accordingly. So that, that sums up my presentation on the boards and on the plans themselves. Um there was a couple of comments in the engineering review letter by Mister Hess. So overall, we agree with the findings of Mister Hess's letter. Uh and I believe that we've addressed most of his comments throughout the presentation this evening. We will agree to incorporate his comments in the final site plan, again, should this project ultimately be approved by this board. Uh but there are a few comments that I just wanted to address with the board this evening. Uh comment number four, we're showing six, if I go back to our layout plan. We are showing six E V spaces just south of the proposed A building suite four um and across from the mid-level of the main building. And these six E V spaces were not labeled on the plans as to when they would be installed. Uh and they, these will be installed within three years of, of obtaining the C O. And that's a nice segue into the E V space, sorry, E V charging stations and when they will be installed. So the state statute requires that we install one-third of the E V spaces before a C O is issued, one, the next one-third within three years thereof and the final one-third within six years of the, of the C O. The applicant intends to follow that phasing schedule and may even accelerate it, um depending on how the development of the shopping center goes. Comment number ten on Mister Hess's review letter. Um he indicated that the loading dock one or L D one um was not included in the submission. I believe we did include it in the submission. It was stuck between pages seven and eight in our site plan set, which may have been why he missed it. Uh we can certainly provide additional copies of just that sheet to him for clarity and for his review. Um additionally, under comment number fourteen, we did provide a copy of the maintenance manual and it is my understanding that he has since received it. Um but if he has not, we can again, provide additional copies to him. Um the letter ends with some engineering traffic comments and some landscape comments, and I will defer those to our respective professionals for that.
Thank you much, very much, Mister Delaney. That was a, a terrific summary of a uh a lot of information there, so. Mister Chair, if board members have questions of Mister Delaney?
Yes, uh Mister Delaney, the first thing I want to get on the record is this was uh John Hess's letter to you dated June seventh, twenty twenty-three. Is that the letter that you referring to?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so you are going to accept everything on, in this letter up to page seven, where it stops at number nineteen. Is that correct? With the uh, with the additions that you just put into the record?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, so traffic, we'll have to see where we go from there. Um, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to explain how this works now. Mister Delaney has presented a lot of information. Uh the board will ask questions of Mister Delaney if they so choose based on his testimony. Then we open up to the public questions. Remember, a question starts with which, when, where, why, what? Okay, we do not have people starting to make comments about the application. You're asking the professional a question about his testimony tonight. So there will be time for public comment later on and there'll be time to ask questions of other professionals. So again, I want to be clear, when you start your comment, I would ask you to start with a question about something that has been presented. You will have three minutes to ask and have repartee with questions. You may come back later and ask another professional more questions. But I want to keep this in a reasonable fashion and that's the way the planning board has always done it. And we're going to follow the same method. Uh when we get to the public uh questioning, I will ask you to raise your hand and be identified uh i- in the uh on, on, online. So you will then identify yourself, uh you'll state your name and you may ask your question. If the question is outside of the realm of what uh the professional, in this case Mister Delaney, has testified to, he will say he can't answer that, somebody else will, or I will say that that was not part of his testimony. After that, the reason that we have public questions is to provide more information to the board. So we can have this to understand the application better and provide questions that may not have come up, that the applicant may have, not have thought about and the applicant's professional may testify to. This will be for everybody who testifies this evening. All questions will be asked in that format, will be answered in that format during the three-minute time period. If multiple people come up and ask the same question again and again and again, I will say that has been asked and answered. The public and the board has heard that. So we, I don't want to be rude to anybody, but we also, the applicant also has rights to have a, a fair hearing. And the public has the right to understand what is in the mind of others in the public. So having said that, I'm going to start with the board's questions. So the first person will be Vice Chairman Wilks. Do you have any questions?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um Mister President, can you please uh go over the entrance on Eagle Rock again, the, the current? The current entrance right now, um I mean, really doesn't fit. I'm sure, but can you go over, what you, what you gonna change about that? Are you gonna keep it the same?
Absolutely. So I'm just gonna refer to the aerial first to just highlight the existing. So as you come into the site, a lot of the striping in the area has been worn. It's really hard to see what's going on. It's just a giant sea of asphalt. So in the proposed conditions, as I go through our plans. So as you enter the site, whether you're making a right-hand turn into the site or the left into the site, we're proposing to expand and you can see right here the existing outline of the curb line. Now, we're proposing to shift this curb line significantly to the west. Uh and we're proposing to elongate it. And what this will do is help control the movement of cars in, it will narrow it up and help slow them down before they get right in front of the main building. For the out-movements, we're gonna be maintaining that existing right-hand turn only lane.
Okay.
And as far as exiting the shopping center, we're gonna have a dedicated left turn only lane and a second lane, which will provide through access onto the side street across Eagle Rock and left turn access out.
Okay, so you're still proposing to keep the island there, as I assume?
In between, yes. It'll be reconfigured slightly, but it will maintain.
Okay, and you're still maintaining the sidewalk that's there, cuz I know, I'm pretty sure it's a bus stop there or something. The, the, how, is it gonna be wider or is it still gonna be the same as far as how, how wide it is?
The sidewalk will be as wide as, uh will be maintained in width and we're providing additional sidewalks. I think the sidewalk starts and stops along Eagle Rock here. And we're providing a sidewalk that goes from this intersection all the way to the bus stop and then eventually all the way to the end of the property.
And that's the only way. So if somebody's coming um the opposite way on Eagle Rock, coming towards the C V S there to make a left into the, into there, they, they can't, they would have to go all the way around?
Correct, they're gonna make a left, if you follow my mouse, make a left into the single lane.
Oh, they're gonna, oh, the single lane, okay. So a single lane, so that'll be from east and west, from both directions, it will be a single lane going as far as the entrance into, into there, the egress.
Correct.
Okay, and so can you show me the um, on the sidewalk again on Prospect? That's gonna go all the way down, continuing contiguous um sidewalk going all the way down the street?
Exactly, so the sidewalk will start, will maintain all along Eagle Rock.
Right.
Where it is, and if it's not there, we're gonna be providing it. And then that sidewalk will then be continued all the way down Prospect Avenue, across the bowl, the first of the two boulevard entrances. Again, continuing across the frontage. It will continue across the northern boulevard entrance and it will continue all the way up and tie into the existing sidewalk north of the property.
Okay, can you show me the entrance right now that's by the uh Mavis, I was in, well, the tire store down there? And that goes, that's gonna go straight directly to the back? Can you just show that to me again, please?
The proposal, the existing.
Um, the proposed.
So the proposed sidewalk?
No, that's sorry, well, I'm sorry. So after they make, that, make the turn by the yeah, right in there, can you just show me going all the way back how it's gonna go direct back into the other um buildings over there to the right as well as in the back?
Absolutely. So as you come into the site, you can make a right-hand turn, which will allow you to go to the existing Mavis building, buildings A and B. It'll provide access to the rear of the buildings, cuz this is a one-way drive aisle. I mean, you didn't make that right-hand turn, you can, can you continue straight up the drive aisle to the frontage of the main building, where you can make a left, go toward the new target space or make a right. Go to buildings A and B and then subsequently go behind the existing main building.
Okay, and you're talking about right from that entrance as well, having a, a possible drive-through type of um fast food restaurant or something to that effect?
So the drive-through will be on building C. So in order to access that, you would come in the southern boulevard entrance off of Prospect Ave, come into the site, make a right. Then you can make a right again in the parking lot and continue along toward building C where you would enter the drive, the drive-through just behind the building.
That'd be the best way to go through. So, I mean, coming through by the Mavis building, that would be, they'll pretty much have to go all the way around then, you're saying?
If they were to access that, they'd have to come up, make a left and from the main space and come down.
All the way down, okay. And as far as the, the lighting, um so you said each individual building or each, each, each individual company or, you know, whoever's there will have their own signage?
Um, I believe they'll have their own signage. I think the architect will be able to talk more about that.
Will there be a, a big sign kind of put, putting a list of all the different stores or shops that would be there or will, will it just be based on individuality?
There will be a couple of pylon signs throughout the shopping center. Um there, the existing sign near the northern entrance to the site on Prospect Avenue will be replaced with a new pylon sign. Um we're also providing a new pylon sign at the southern entrance. And there will be a smaller sign at the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue, Prospect Avenue um with the name of the site on it. These are all on the architectural plans.
Right.
Um and he can go over those a little bit more detail.
Okay, all right, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you, uh Vice Chairman. Mister Delaney, I have a question to follow up on the Vice Chairman's questions. So will there be uh illuminated signs for ordering? Are the, is this ordering online? How will you keep that moving? Is this like a Starbucks? Will you go up to the sign and order there? Or is it something that is pre-ordered and you're just picking up there?
So, so that's a really good question. It'll ultimately come down to whoever the tenant is. Um it's my understanding that there, that there's ownership is speaking with tenants that actually have both of those needs that you just described.
So then you would have to come for variances for more signage? If that is, if that's the case, where they would pull up and order there? From signs?
Um, we would, yeah, I guess we would have to, and we'll agree to um certainly abide by all the West Orange signage regulations.
Okay, um. Mayor McCartney?
Um, thank you, Chairman. Uh Mister Delaney and to the applicant, as the new mayor, I just wanted to tell you how anxious we have been to hear this application and to see it. So, uh welcome. Um just sifting through my notes, um Mister Delaney, you said that there was an R according to the planner's report, there was an R five residential zone and you mentioned R six. I see that that's toward the far east of the I mean, I'm sorry, far west of the building. I just wanted to show the separate where those separate zones are and apparently you're where those separate zones are, and apparently you're not touching that. Anyway.
Exactly, so I'm gonna refer to two drawings to help demonstrate where this line is. So the first is the copy of the zoning map, which is provided on our, the title sheet of our site plan set, and you can see right here against the Mayfair Farms property, the property makes a slight kick and kink in the line, and then traveling almost perfectly north, we have the zone line which separates the PC zone from the R six zone. So now if we go over to our overall development plan, oh, look, I, anticipation of your question, I already superimposed it. So that's the line right there, and we're not touching anything beyond that line in the residential zone.
Thank you. Um, I also wanted to say how much I appreciate all of the sustainable elements that you talked about, we do pay attention to that about the EV charging stations and all the reasons for the landscaping improvements and the stormwater improvements as well. Um, you talked about, uh, Buildings A and B. I have notes, I have to prepare my question, all right, so I'm building A and B. You talked about the setback from the property line, but can you talk about uh, how far away, it's just showing white space, how far away is it from the development that would be to the north of this site?
So what I can attempt to do here is try to scale our aerial image, and this may not be perfect, but I'll give you a good representation. So from the back of the closest home to the existing edge of pavement, which we will not be touching. Apologies, I have to find out what scale this is at. It's an interesting scale. My apologies, bear with me. So from the back of the existing home to the edge of the existing pavement, you're looking at about approximately one hundred feet.
Okay.
About fifty feet of which is a pretty dense wooded area.
Yes, good, okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Um, I also appreciated Mister, Mister Hess's report talking about adding the sidewalks there near Building uh, C, but that raises the question over by Building D. That you talked about a sea of asphalt near the entrance at Eagle Rock Avenue, but near that Building D, are it, are there any walkways, or can there be any walkways or something proposed on that wide span of parking lot?
So we're proposing a new sidewalk that comes in off of Eagle Rock Avenue along this.
Right, no, I meant in the parking lot itself. Where?
Through the, through the parking lot, no, we're not proposing any side, any crosswalks through the parking lot. You know, pedestrians like in any other parking lot would have to walk behind the cars up and through it, um, and outside of the vehicular movement areas.
And to the sidewalk that is right there in the center of that entryway, is that a sidewalk there, that green line you have there, near what you, a boulevard, you call?
Uh, through, right through here?
Yes.
That's gonna be a landscaped area up that boulevard.
Okay, so how, there, I guess, just walking through the parking lot? I had concerns about that, is there any way to add some type of walkway or sidewalk to get from that parking lot to the store?
So from the parking lot to the store, the only way that we could possibly provide um, a sidewalk through that would be to eliminate, either, either eliminate some of the parking spaces, um, or possibly convert some of these parking spaces to compact spaces, and then provide like we did in front of Target, a sidewalk, um, in between. We could look at an option like that. Um, but again, for a, for a shopping center like this, you know, walking through the parking lot along the back of the cars is not, is not untypical.
I guess my other question is, um, just trying to understand that thirteen-foot retaining wall that you mentioned, is that going to be tiered? Um, I, I would need a more clarity on a thirteen-foot high retaining wall.
So it is not a tiered retaining wall? Um, one of the things I want to point out about that is that that existing area is, is pretty steep. Um, but the exposed face of the retaining wall will be facing into the property. So the property on the development of Mayfair Farm won't actually be looking at that retaining wall, they're above it.
I have to think about that one. All right, that's it for now, thank you.
Council President Williams?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, a couple of questions that I had, if we could just move back over to Eagle Rock Avenue and the entrance. Um, so, thank you for the sidewalk and extending that down, appreciate that. As well as giving clear direction and definition to the entrance, uh, coming in and going out. If you are coming up Eagle Rock Avenue and making the left, is, is there gonna continue to be a left-turn signal into that? Um, and if there isn't one, which I can't recall off the top of my head, um, will there be one?
Well, I will go over to our aerial, and I believe, yes, there is an existing dedicated left-hand turn lane into the shopping center, and that will be maintained in the proposed conditions.
And I, and, and there's a stoplight there?
There is a stoplight there, yes.
So will it be a left-turn signal? Um, is that something we can request, is that something we can implement? How, how can we achieve that?
I believe there is an existing left-turn signal, um, to, for that dedicated lane.
And that'll be maintained?
Yes, ma'am.
And this, Williams, that's probably a question that we can have the traffic engineer discuss in more detail for you.
Okay, great, that would be wonderful. And then I had, um, I'm sorry, I'm just going back to my notes, give me one second, sorry. Um, for the, um, entrance coming from, again, Prospect, and going into the lower section, and we talked about making sure there's some connectivity there. Um, as you are leaving the new building and making that kind of bend, is there going to be a crosswalk as well as stop signage, so that pedestrians will have the right of way? Um, what's that situation going to look like? I don't recall explanation.
Absolutely, so I just want to clarify, you're talking about right here where the building makes the bend?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so coming from the back of the shopping center, there's gonna, there is a stop bar there, and we are proposing a crosswalk as well.
Okay, so with the stop bar, does that mean there is a stop sign, or just something on the pavement?
There will be a stop sign, anywhere that we're showing a stop bar on these plans, there is also a stop sign.
Okay, great, thank you. And then if I can just go to my last question. Um, we talked about the extra loading docks that we wanted to include in the rear. Um, so we're, we have three that are dedicated, we're proposing adding three more, um, which is totally within um, parameters, but then we wanted to have an opportunity to include three more, um, that require a variant. So here, yes, just, just wanted to be curious. Um, also wanted to know how close this area is to the residential development, what's, um, what type of barriers do we have? Um, and then also wanted to note, um, just to make sure, since we are considering a variance, that if there was full, you know, three, three trucks there, um, would each of the trucks have the capacity to enter and exit, um, without any challenges?
Those are excellent questions, um, so I'll work backwards on that, so the truck movements were designed, we did submit turning templates as part of the site plan application, showing that trucks can be parked in those three spaces, and can still main traffic flow throughout the rear of that shopping center there. Um, and additionally, while there's trucks parked there, you know, the other docks could be, uh, be loaded into and out of. Um, as far as the buffer goes, there is a slightly, there's a small existing wooded buffer along the back there, and where these loading docks are is nowhere near any existing residential developments, it's kind of tucked in the corner by the Mayfair Farms property.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Mister Alper?
Sure, thank you, um. I think I've got, I think some of what I have has been asked, and some of it I know is gonna come from others. Um, I know pedestrian safety board had some questions, but I'm sure Mister Greeno will ask those. Um, I think my big question at the moment is roofs, uh, what can you tell us about, uh, solar, maybe green roofs, white-colored roofs, what, what are we looking at?
Um, so I'm gonna defer any questions about the buildings and the roofs to the architect.
Um, I think that's all I have for you then.
Thank you, Mister Alper, Mister Greeno.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, Mister Delaney, thank you for the exceptional presentation. Just a quick question, I also think this question may be on pedestrian safety checklist, but where you said there'll be stop signs located where there are crosswalks and stop bars, will the possibility be for these stop signs to have blinking lights on them for more, you know, vehicular awareness?
Um, it's it's something we can consider and, and talk through with the applicant. My hesitation on a shopping center like this, with so many stop bars and stop signs, is that the blinking stop signs will just become they'll become less effective because there are so many of them.
Okay, could it be considered when you talk to the applicant that the possibility in the areas of high-traffic volume, where there's, you know, more volume going and pedestrians, would that be a consideration?
Yeah, I think that's certainly a, a fair compromise and a great comment, yeah. I, I think it would make sense, and we can speak with the applicant about this, to provide, you know, blinking stop signs along the main entrances, you know, along the main building, and along Buildings A and B, where those high pedestrian loads are.
Okay, thank you, Mister Lane, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mister Delaney, uh, to, uh, tag on to that comment. In West Orange, there are a couple of stop signs that are blinking that are solar-powered. Uh, would the applicant consider to use solar power for those stop signs and/or any other lighting in the project?
Um, I'm not sure about the any other lighting. Uh, I'll defer that to the applicant. Uh, but as far as the stop signs go, yes, if we, if we were to incorporate blinking stop signs along those, you know, high pedestrian areas and heavy vehicular areas, I think we could agree to make them, um, solar-powered.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Morgan?
Yes, yes, thank you, sir. Mister Delaney, thank you for your wonderful presentation. I would say most of my concerns have been asked and mentioned thus far, I imagine some more will be. Um, I just want to revisit briefly the number of ADA spots, and, and if I recall correctly, it sounds like they're gonna increase from what was there before.
Absolutely, so I'm just going over to our title sheet so I can get the exact number of ADA spaces. So based on our requirement, there are twenty-one ADA spaces required, and it's based on the number of parking spaces we're providing. Um, and through the parking lot, we are providing twenty-seven ADA spaces, again, all strategically throughout, eleven of which will be van-accessible spaces.
Okay. I have nothing further at this, at this moment, thank you.
Thank you, and Mister Delaney, you, you talked about the asphalt, will, uh, applicant use cool pavement to decrease the heat island effect, besides the description you had putting, uh, islands in of, uh, greenery and trees to decrease the heat island effect?
Uh, the applicant has considered the use of cool pavement technology on the shopping center. Uh, I think there are some disadvantages with the cool paving technology, would, in particular on this site. Um, generally, those pavement types are not as strong, and they're not as robust materials, um, which is not something you want for a shopping center, shopping centers see very high vehicular loads, a lot of loading movements, truck traffic, et cetera. So we certainly don't want a weaker pavement. Um, another type of technology you can consider that's also considered a cool paving technology is porous pavers. Um, but unfortunately, this site has been filled throughout the years, and, you know, based on our drainage work that we've done prior, the soils on site really don't provide permeability, so the water would have nowhere to go once it goes inside of the permeable pavers. Um, and, and because of that, that's why we focused so heavily on incorporating these large landscape islands throughout, and build and plant trees in there, which will have some large canopies.
Okay, so to those islands, uh, will it be able to use rainwater to water some of those islands?
Um. I, I'll defer to our, I'll consult with our applicant on that. I think it was an option we had explored, but ultimately ruled out for this site.
Okay, and if not, how will those islands be maintained in perpetuity?
I will defer that to the landscape architect.
Okay, cool, thank you. Uh, Mister Smeraldo?
Yes, uh, Mister Delaney, thank you for your presentation, I got a few questions, um. Well, that, I'll piggybacking off a few that were here earlier, Vice Chair Wilks asked about the entrance near the Mavis. There's an existing road there now going in, that's gonna be eliminated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, um. The, the mayor's question regarding the retaining wall and the other areas, I think it's Building D where the Verizon is. You're talking about elevated, uh, areas and stuff, is that gonna be, how's that gonna be guarded, safeguarded from accidental falls, slips? Anything like that, what do you, what do you have in store for that?
That's an excellent question, so near Building D, we're proposing any walls. Uh, we're providing a guardrail along the top of that to protect pedestrians from falling, that'll have a handrail on it. Um, and then in the rear, where that thirteen-half foot wall is to accommodate the loading docks, we're gonna be providing a fence along the top of that wall. We don't expect any pedestrians in that area, but because it is so close to the property line, we want to make sure that we're providing safety measures.
Okay, um, I'll piggyback off Mister Greeno's concerns with the stoplights. I see you have some walkways there, are you also planning on, you know, the, uh, the yellow signs, people press them, and, you know, people will be safe walking across? Are they gonna be, um, placed in anywhere for pedestrian safety?
Um, that is not something that we had incorporated into this plan, again, that's something we can certainly, you know, consult with the applicant on and consider in, in some of the high-traffic areas.
And based on the chairman's request, I would also say make them solar-powered also, you know, if that's the case. Uh, and the last, and the last question I have is regarding the lights, you testified that the, the existing lights are about thirty feet in height. Um, you want a variance from eighteen feet, and the reason you're going to twenty-five, is that, is that to eliminate the amount of, uh, uh, light stations you need to, um, so you don't have to increase the amounts around the parking lot?
That's correct. It'll reduce the number of lighting fixtures that are required, and also when you go to the shorter, the shorter mounting heights, it creates a lot of bright spots in the parking lot where you have it's bright by the fixture, dark away from the fixture, and by having fixtures mounted taller, it helps eliminate that and even out the lighting levels.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Jensen, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Um. The, uh, loading docks, where will the trucks enter and exit to get to the loading dock?
Are you referring to the loading docks behind the Target building, behind the main building?
I assume they're gonna be large, like tractor-trailers.
That is correct, they will be, so the way we envision that happening is that they will enter the site off of Eagle Rock Avenue, they'll either making a right on, into the site, or a left into the site. They'll then continue around the south side of the building, going to the west around the rear. They'll access all of the loading docks, they will then continue out, um, through the rear parking lot, along a small portion of the front edge of the A building. Well, it will turn to the south. Um, and one of the things, when we designed the shopping centers, we really did not want those trucks to then continue south along the main building. So instead, the trucks will make a left and go out the northern entrance and exit the site onto Prospect Avenue. And this was designed to minimize any conflict with those trucks and pedestrians.
Okay, and, uh, you mentioned that the, uh, Mavis and the Dollar Store and Staples, the Mavis is going to a different store, and the Dollar Store and the Staples will be taken over by the Target. Are they being relocated within the building, or are they just going out altogether?
Um, I believe that they're going out altogether out of the shopping center anyway, but I'll defer that to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mister Jensen, uh, Mister Delaney, do you know anything about the hours that these tractor-trailers will be there? If they travel, if they come and leave overnight, then there wouldn't be too much pedestrian traffic interaction?
Yeah, typically in a shopping center like this, we would anticipate mostly evening deliveries. We certainly would not expect deliveries, you know, in, in peak high-traffic times, you know, i.e. Friday nights and Saturday afternoons.
Okay, great, uh, Mister Cardoso, do you have any questions for Mister Delaney?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mister Delaney, for your presentation, um. Before my questions, uh, let me just ask Mister Meese, um, what other experts will be testifying tonight?
We have a representative of Target, we also have the landscape architect and the traffic engineer. Okay. All available to testify tonight.
Thank you. And so what would we be missing?
Uh, the planner and the architect.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, is there a plan at this time to extend this meeting to another date or?
Keep, keep talking, keep, you keep talking.
Alright, just, just wondering since we're missing the two.
I got a lot of quarters and I got a lot of quarters in the meter, keep going.
Alright, terrific, okay, so, Mr. Delaney, looking at the parking lots again, Mr. Morgan asked this about ADA spaces, I would just ask the same thing about electric vehicle parking spaces. I'm sure you mentioned it, but are we meeting requirements for ordinances?
Yes, we are, so let me go back to our title sheet. So we're required to provide four percent of the proposed parking spaces as electric vehicle. So that would have a requirement of forty-seven spaces and we're proposing forty-eight, so one over the requirement.
Okay, terrific, and can we look at the parking lot at the second level, the mid-level?
Absolutely.
On that, I'm having trouble visualizing because in, in my minds the first, uh, I don't know, grouping here. I feel as though that's on a slope, is, is that not the case, is that all flat?
That's an excellent question, so I'll go over to our grading plans, we can take a look at that. And what we're proposing through here is as the boulevard entrance comes in, just to the north of the target space, that area will be fairly steep. But as you get to the parking area itself and where those parking spaces are, the parking lot does flatten out. All of the parking that we're proposing is, has grades of around or less than five percent, which is really the maximum industry standard.
Okay, and then the other thing about that, that same section is the parking, um. Why can't I think, yeah, the, the spaces that you have, uh, the first ten spaces that grouping there. I feel as though people are backing out, that's the only area that I can see that they're backing out into what might be a high-traffic area, and especially this, you just explained is where the trucks would be, uh, you know, exiting through, so. I don't know if that's the most convenience or, or safe, uh. I don't know, grouping right there, just the, those ten spaces in particular.
Understood, so, you know, we're, we're providing those spaces in order to provide some additional parking options to Building A and that mid-level there. I don't anticipate that people coming to the site would be fighting over those spaces per se, those probably some of the last used spaces in that particular parking field. I think the applicant would certainly consider limiting those ten spaces, if the board so, so chose.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I would leave it to the, um, advice of the town engineer and my colleagues on the board, um. The park, the lower level parking lot, can we look at that?
Absolutely.
So I'm just curious, I know that there are spaces existing back there, and I'm wondering, is most of this designated for employee parking? Or, or is, you know, has that been discussed? I can't imagine that people, a lot of people won't even know it's back there unless they're specifically looking for some of these stores on the lower level.
Understood, so yeah, the front portions of this, or the eastern portions that directly by that lower level, will certainly be used by any retail customers going to those stores. It hasn't been directly discussed and, you know, we haven't put any signage or anything like that, designating a lot of this as employee parking. But from a practical perspective and operationally, it would make sense for Target and some of those other stores in this area to use that parking field as employee parking, providing more parking in the front for their patrons.
Yeah, yeah, I'm specifically thinking maybe not even those three groupings on the right, but the, the two most, yeah. Towards the north, I guess, or whatever that, uh.
To the west.
Yeah, west, to the west.
There you go.
Yeah, just because also that would be. Can we see where the, um, can we go a little more to the left and? Okay, yeah, I guess the trucks wouldn't have any, any trouble moving through those. Um. Can we look at the I guess you call them boulevards, the entrance to the, the rightmost entrance closest to buildings A and B?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we can enlarge that, so Mayor McCartney asked earlier if there was a way to incorporate any additional sidewalks, and I'm looking at the green space that you have on the left of this boulevard, is that not a space, it looks wide enough to incorporate an additional sidewalk that could get us closer to the Target building?
So a couple of things on that, so first, that island's being used as a, as a grade break, so the grades through there are pretty steep, so to include a sidewalk, we'd have to include a little bit of retaining wall. But if we zoom out on the shopping center, right, and we look at how, if pedestrians were to come to the site, how they would access it. Pedestrians aren't going to be crossing from the reservation because there's no way to cross from there. So they can be coming from the north and into the site here. So from that perspective, they can just come into the site right against the Mavis building, access A and B and access the main building as well. Now, if they want it, if they didn't want to come in that way and walk around, and instead they want to get to the C building. One of the comments in the sorry, the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board was to provide a sidewalk access through this island right here to Building C. And I think that's something that the applicant would certainly be willing to consider and you know, you could walk up this sidewalk, provide access to Building C and then also have access to the main building, so I think that would be a better way, a better place to add a sidewalk to provide the circulation you're looking for.
Well, then to that point, can we look at Building D?
Absolutely.
So what did you say, the elevation here is along the, um, for the most wall with these parking spaces? You know, up against the intersection?
Yeah, so the wall along the northern portion of the stores varies.
Oh, no, not, not, not there, the, the green space by the intersection, you know, the corner, yeah.
Yep.
So if you're going to, if it's a possibility to put a walkway from, you know, close to, to building, off the sidewalk to Building C, I'm wondering if there isn't a possibility of putting stairs and a walkway to, you know, the back, well, that's perhaps not, the, the front of the building is, uh, along the, yeah, I'm having a little trouble visualizing, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're good, so I, I think I understand what you're looking for, and I, and I think we can accomplish it from two different directions. I think we can add a sidewalk, a crossing right here at the western corner by the Verizon and put a sidewalk in this island through here to provide access off of Eagle Rock. And, and again, if the board, you know, so chooses to incorporate a sidewalk on this side of the building, we can certainly accommodate a crosswalk here and a sidewalk connection to Prospect Avenue. That would result in the reduction of one parking space on the site.
I, I think that might be something that we'd like to possibly include or at least revisit later in the discussion this evening. And could we look at the entrance to Target and the entrance to Whole Foods?
You're talking about off of Eagle Rock Avenue?
No, the entrance to the buildings themselves, sorry.
Understood.
Okay, so can you, can you make it clear for me where, where the entrance for Whole Foods is in this?
So I believe, it's a little hard to see on this plan, but I believe the main entrance to Whole Foods is, is right here where this bump out of the building is. So that can be accessed through this crosswalk here.
Okay, so I'm wondering, you, you mentioned additional, I don't know if the term is grading, but surface, you know, we can see that the, in addition to the Target ballast, there's a surface treatment, and you said that would help to slow down traffic and identify the storefront. I'm wondering if there's been any discussion of something similar for Whole Foods, meaning that that's, you know, highly trafficked and we have people walking from different directions in the parking lot, I, I know that, you know, that there might be kind of a turf dispute or like trying to identify. I don't know, Target, Target being the flagship or proposed flagship store, um. I don't know, just to, in, in terms of beautifying, you know, creating cohesive space and then also safety. I'm wondering if there's also something that can be done for Whole Foods to delineate that space, make it clear for people driving through, because that's actually the first place if they're coming off of Eagle Rock, that they're going to be driving through Whole Foods to then drive through the, the Whole Foods, past the Whole Foods entrance to then drive to the Target entrance. I'm just wondering if that can be a thought as well.
Understood, so yeah, we did not, you know, contemplate putting a surface treatment on that main drive out there for Whole Foods. You know, I, I think the crosswalk itself does an excellent job in delineating that area. And by narrowing up this drive aisle here, you know, we're, we're helping to slow down cars and make them more aware of pedestrians. But we can certainly explore that option with ownership and Whole Foods to see if they would want some kind of surface treatment as well.
Thank you, that, that is all my questions, thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions?
I do, yes, so, um, I kind of want to revisit a question, question twelve or comma twelve on our letter that has to go with the major development. I know that you went over briefly, uh, on pretty much, on pretty much how you kind of going on as far as even though you are a major development, that you kind of met all of the marks. So I want to ask if you can kind of go over on how you meet water quantity?
Absolutely, so. When it comes to water quantity, there are several, a handful of different calculations that we can provide. The most common and the one that this board has probably seen the most is the incorporation of detention basins to meet specific reductions in stormwater runoff. And this is really common in any kind of development where you're proposing to increase the impervious onsite, add new buildings, add new parking lots, et cetera. This site is rather unique in that we're actually reducing the impervious coverage onsite and also the amount of motor vehicle surface. So there's another calculation in the stormwater management regulations that allows the applicant to show that during a specific rainfall event for the two-year, the ten-year, and the one-hundred-year storm events, that at every single time interval, in which case our report is down to six-minute time intervals, I believe, it may be even shorter, that at every single one of those intervals, the runoff from the site has been reduced, so it's lower. And that's exactly what we're able to outline in our stormwater management report.
Okay, are you referring to the stormwater report that's dated December ninth, twenty twenty?
Check our records.
Or is there a more recent report?
Bear with me one moment, please, sorry. So that is the report dated December, March, sorry, December ninth, but revised through March third.
See, I don't know if our office has that report.
Understood, we, we did arrive at the same conclusion in the December ninth report, the revisions between, I believe, are minor and mostly to address some of, some of your comments.
Okay, yeah, I, I've just noticed in the twenty twenty report you did make that same comment, but you were, as far as meeting throughout lower volumes during the whole duration of the storm, but in that one twenty twenty report, you also show reductions in, in peak flows, which is a, which is kind of a contradiction. So.
Well, if we reduce the peak flow at every single time interval, then we would also be reducing it at the peak as well.
Yeah, no, no, because in the twenty twenty, uh, report, you have tables in the summary and we're just mentioning the peak flow, which can kind of lead off on the other on the other standard. Did, did you guys submit to, to the board the most recent report? You said March of twenty twenty-three?
I believe that we have, I'm looking at the agenda right now.
We have a J. Michael P. T. P. E., New Jersey Professional Engineer, December ninth, twenty twenty, revised March third, twenty twenty-three. That was submitted to the board.
And that is the latest one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, so. Yeah, maybe, John.
Jordan, do you have that report?
So that's why I'm looking right now, originally, let's see.
Oh. It's on the links on the website.
Yeah, I think I just found it in our files.
Okay.
He, he, Mr. Hess mentioned it in his report of June seventh, that he reviewed the March third report.
Okay, alright, then I must have missed that in, in his letter. Alright, with that, then I don't have any other further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lainey, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, not of this witness at this time, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the public, at this time, we're going to open up questions of Miss, for Miss, for Mr. Delaney on the testimony that he provided, again, please ask, please state your name and we're going to ask you to ask a question in the form of a question. So anybody who is, wants to ask a question, please raise your hand and be identified.
Alright, so I'm going to start by promoting Mike Dan Miller to panelist.
Chairman, we have Matthew Rosen as a panelist here with his hand raised, it has been raised.
Okay, Dylan, can we do Mr. Rosen first, Mr. Rosen, Matthew Rosen Esquire?
Panelist here.
Ms. McGovern, do you want to swear him in?
Yes, I want to go.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rosen, you're, you're asking, do you, or you want me to swear I'm in to take a question, Dr. Bagwell?
I'm sorry, no, go right ahead. You have to state your name for the record.
Yes, sir, Matthew Rosen, I'm an attorney, I represent the owners of fifty-seven Terrace Avenue who are the subdivision, or who are owners in the subdivision to the north. I'd appreciate if we could kind of zoom in on that section by Buildings A and B. Okay, so first I have questions regarding the lighting plan, I don't know if you can pull that up, Mr. Delaney?
Absolutely, just give me one second for it to load.
So just so the board is, is aware, um, the, the building with the round a hundred feet, which I saw to be ninety-seven feet, that actually is my client's building, so, so that should give you all some context for, for the property that I'm concerned with. The lighting here in the back, that seems to be a significant amount of lighting, how high is that lighting?
Absolutely, that's a great question, so earlier I mentioned that the majority of the fixtures on site are mounted at twenty-five feet, which does require a waiver, now behind this building, because it is closer to residential properties, we want it to be respective of that, so we lowered these fixtures down to eighteen feet in mounting height. The other thing we did is design it so that the lighting levels at the property line are no higher than point-three-foot candles. And in most instances, it's below point-three.
And just so the, I, I want to border on comment, but it's a downward slope to those, those residential buildings in, in the Terrace Avenue development, correct?
That is correct, they are downhill, you know, with a wooded buffer in between, yes.
And you described, you, you described that buffer there as heavily wooded. That would be your description of it?
Yes, it's a wooded area with heavy underbrush, yes.
How far down is it in elevation to, to that closest northern property?
Let me take a look at our grading plan, I'm not sure if our topography extends that far. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact grade difference between the parking lot.
So would it be possible to consider some sort of directional lighting that starts at the farthest north part and beams not in a complete circle towards both, both the, uh, I guess the service road as well as the, the residential, but actually points towards the service road from the northern side? That be something that would possibly work better for the residents in that northern northern development?
That is absolutely something we consider, yeah, we can consider putting pole-mounted fixtures, I'm sorry, let me go back to our lighting plan.
Especially because it's elevated. Would you consider making some sort of directional element to the lighting there to, to come southward as opposed to pointing northward?
It's something we can look at and I, I would want to study that, you know, we can certainly just agree to put pole-mounted fixtures along the northern property line and have it shine in toward the property, but to your point, you know, your, your client's property is down the slope. And by moving the, the lighting source closer to them because of that slope, it could actually may end up being a detriment as opposed to having them further away and building mounted at eighteen feet.
Is there any, is there any proposed landscaping in that greens, green space that's going in?
I believe there is, but the landscape architect can talk about that further.
And you spoke about the impervious coverage, that's overall for the entire site, correct?
Correct. We're reducing impervious on the entire site.
But clearly, I mean, to my eye, there's an increase in impervious uh going in, in that northern section, right where there's a uh, right where, right where the water drainage is supposed to comes down, right?
So actually, no, there's still a reduction of total impervious surface in that area of the site. The, that existing pavement line along the northern edge of the shopping center um is going to be maintained. We're not pushing it out any further than it is today. And then we're providing landscape islands, you know, throughout the parking lot and throughout the courtyards and around the rear. So we're reducing.
How about for, in that courtyard there, you mentioned the possibility of putting open-air dining of some sort?
That's correct.
Is there gonna be anything, I mean, there may be an increase in noise uh to the, to the northern neighborhood if there's gonna be outdoor dining there? Is there any sort of barrier that can be put between the property beyond landscaping? Both for light and for maybe odors, for noise uh that can just further separate that residential area uh to the north from the proposed site here.
Absolutely. So as far as that courtyard is concerned, and the architect uh can probably speak more to this than I can, but I believe there will be a screen wall proposed in this courtyard to help uh provide for some noise attenuation coming out of that courtyard to the property to the north. Um, and I believe the landscape architect will talk about additional landscaping that's going to be added along this northern property line to help supplement the existing wooded buffer.
And just, I, I know I have a time limit here, but, but uh specifically with that first county drainage pipe, um, you said there's gonna be some improvements. Um, it, it, I think it runs right underneath that courtyard, correct?
It does run underneath the courtyard, yes.
And is, so the courtyard is, is, what are the improvements to that line? Because that line it, 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 is it correct that it just comes out in the form of a big pipe and it drains into some rocks down the rock wall there?
Correct. It drains into a, a ditch that I believe was ultimately installed when that residential development was created. So that line, we're not proposing, um, we're not touching that existing county line. We're gonna leave the existing line as is. Albeit, we're going to inspect it during construction to make sure it's, it's still adequate, um, but we're not going to be increasing the size of it at all.
Okay, uh, I don't have any more questions for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. At this time, we're gonna take a five-minute break. So everybody be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, God.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record. Welcome everybody back. Thank you for the brief intermission. And the chair recognizes Mr. Damon Miller. Mr. Damon Miller?
Mike, you're good to go.
Okay. The chair recognizes Mr. Damon Miller.
Hello, this is Mike Dunham Miller. I'm a resident at Ten Greenwood Ave. And member of the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board of West Orange. I just have two questions. Um, cause you made our job easy. These plans are great. And Mr. Cardoza, thank you for asking several of the things we would have and other things I'll defer for traffic engineer. Um, Jersey Mikes. From the Jersey Mikes corner, um, no one's mentioned it, and whether it's staying or going, that's the corner where most pedestrians access the bus stop. Is there direct pedestrian access between that corner of the site and the bus stop? Or do pedestrians really have to cross twice?
Uh, so they definitely have the option to cross twice, uh, but they can come down to the site, the sidewalk ends uh right here, and they can cross this drive aisle here and enter into Jersey Mikes at the southeast corner.
Okay, I, I just didn't see any dedicated, you had great, high-visibility cross, uh, stripe crosswalks in other locations. I thought that might be an obvious one, given the direct connection to the mass transit facility right there.
Understood. I, I think that was incorporated, one of the comments in that uh site plan advisory uh for pedestrians. So I, I think it's a good recommendation and one we'll definitely consider adding to the plans.
Thanks. And you mentioned the right turn, turn radiuses, both at uh southbound off of Prospect and eastbound off of Eagle Rock, uh, such as the one that's on the screen right now. Um, you, you called it an improvement. Um, it looks like it's a really large radius. I'm curious what that radius is, I'll say improved or increased to. And what kind of design speed are you trying to achieve on the entrance to the parking lot?
Um, so we have it as a, as a fifty-foot radius. Uh, we're try, certainly trying to slow down the movements into the site, but we didn't want to put in a really tight radius here where one does not exist today. A lot of people are familiar with the shopping center. So we wanted to make it better, but not make it a drastic change where people are hitting the curbs as they're entering the shopping center here. Uh, but with that being said, it's certainly something we can look at in con, in uh, with our traffic expert to try to improve and get those vehicles even slower.
Excellent. Yeah, yeah. From a, a passive traffic calming perspective, I'd see a fifty-foot radius. Doesn't seem very pedestrian-friendly. Okay, um, everything else I, I think will be addressed by others. Um, nice job. Excellent plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We do have a few. Um, we're gonna go to Arden next.
Okay.
Okay, promote to panelists. Okay, Arden, you have.
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Arden Fussman. Hello?
Hi, go ahead, right, and ask your questions, please.
Um, I'm not sure if I missed an answer to this because I, I couldn't listen to every, the whole thing, but um, I live at seventy-seven Terrace Avenue and I back on, I back up to the um shopping center, but more, more, more down. Um, and I want to know how um it's gonna affect the environment, the trees, the wildlife, um, and, and those issues.
Absolutely. So those are actually great questions. So as far as wildlife goes and anything like that, all of the proposed improvements, with the exception of this small loading dock expansion behind Target, um, all the development is wholly contained within the actively disturbed areas of the site. So we're not going into any of the wooded areas, any of the wetlands way in the rear of the site, nothing like that. So no wildlife should be impacted. Um, our landscape architect can certainly talk in more detail about the trees, but what I can tell you is that we're providing a significant increase in landscape islands throughout the site uh as a means to provide for more trees on the property. I believe it's over a hundred trees is what we're ultimately proposing to install here.
So you're not gonna cut down any of the existing trees that are in the woods currently?
Um, I'll defer to that for our landscape architect.
Um, and where, where is the landscape architect?
It'll be the next witness after Alison Mathrin from Target.
So you're not able to tell me if you're gonna cut down trees, in other words?
Uh, I, we're gonna be cutting down a handful of trees within the parking field themselves, since there are a couple of landscape islands that we're gonna be relocating elsewhere. And I, I don't believe that we're cutting down uh any trees within the wooded buffers on the site.
Okay, so you're not, so you're, you're not going like over the developed area. You're not gonna develop more. You're not gonna develop more of the wooded area. You're just gonna use the area that you already have?
That is exactly correct. So if I go to our aerial image, bear with me for a moment. You can see here on these plans, there's a clear line along the northern property line where the existing asphalt is um, as it abuts that residential development to the north. So that line of asphalt is gonna be the same line in the existing, in the proposed conditions as it is in the existing. We're not expanding that at all.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Delaney on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do have up next Kevin Malanga. Okay. Kevin, go ahead.
Mr. Malanga?
Asked to unmute?
I think he's muted there. I think I've unmuted now.
There you are.
Yeah, uh, Chairman Bagoff, good evening. Members of the planning board, good evening. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Uh, my first question of the witness, sir, thank you for your testimony. You use the expression quick casual restaurant. Can you give us an example of a brand of quick casual restaurants?
Absolutely. So there's an existing Chipotle in the center now, and that would be defined as a, a quick casual restaurant.
Does Chipotle have a drive-through?
Uh, this Chipotle does not.
Okay, do most Chipotlis have drive-throughs?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so would you call this a fast food restaurant?
Uh, it really depends ultimately on the tenant that's going in there. From my understandings, it's a quick casual restaurant that will also have a drive-through option.
It, it just respond, respond to that question. The zoning code is very clear on what a fast food restaurant is defined in section twenty-five dash four. And a fast food restaurant is not proposed here.
Thank you for that. At the beginning of your testimony, you said that the goal was to present the image of an upscale shopping center. Is that correct?
That is the intent, yes.
Now, for building C. Then this is the building that's going to have to drive through, am I correct? One of the drive-throughs.
Correct.
The first thing that someone will see is that building when they are entering the shopping center, whether it's from the northernmost entrance or the southernmost entrance on Prospect Avenue.
From those two entrances, that, that's. From those two entrances, that, that's one of the things that they will see as enter the site, yes.
And then the side of the building that is closest to Prospect Avenue, that is the rear of the building. Is that correct?
Um, from an operational perspective, it could be considered the rear, yes.
So. What visitors will see first is a line of cars. And the blank wall. Of the rear of that building.
Um.
That, that's not correct. The architect will review the facade. There is a signage proposed, so it's not a blank wall.
Oh, so there'll be signs on it? I'll ask the, I'll ask the architect about that one. Now, with respect to building. D, you indicated that. It has the capacity to stack up to. Five cars, is that right?
That is correct.
Now for. Drive up windows, the township requires stacking for six vehicles, is that correct?
Um, that may be correct. I'm not familiar with that particular section of the ordinance.
So you're not familiar with. Section 25 dash 11 point 14. C.
I, I would have to review it.
With respect to the parking lot. Were you responsible for designing the island placement on the parking lot?
Yes, I was. In conjunction with our landscape architect, but yes.
And. Is it the fact that. There are rows. In the parking lot. Where the number of spaces exceeds the township requirement of 20 before there's an island.
That is correct. There are spaces, rows of parking throughout, um, where we have in excess of 20 vehicles without the breakup of the landscape space.
Why is that?
It's a really good question. For this particular site, we felt that we met the intent of that ordinance. And, and we believe the intent of that ordinance is to provide landscaping throughout, to break up the impervious coverage, so you don't have a giant sea of asphalt. And so we've included landscape islands along the. You know, along the frontage of the main building, we've included landscape islands, um, throughout the parking lot as well, and along these new boulevard entrances, all of which are gonna serve to break up the asphalt. We can certainly look into adding additional. Landscape islands throughout in order to. You know, eliminate the variance or the waiver. And I. Comply with the 20 space requirement, but it would reduce the parking on site, and I'm not sure that would really add anything above what we're already proposing here.
But how many spaces would it reduce parking?
Uh, I. When we had looked into this, it would eliminate, I believe approximately 20 spaces. It, it could have been up to 25.
And now you are deficient by about 250 spaces, is that right?
Um, that would be per the West Orange standards, yes, but per ITE, no.
So it's really a de minimis difference between. The current deficiency and an additional deficiency, should you decide to put in more islands. Is that correct?
Um, given the scope of the shopping center, I would say it's a fair characterization.
Now, with respect to building D, once again. What type of use is that proposed for?
Um, that I'm not aware of.
Alright, so since there's seating. Plan for outside of that building. Is it likely to be used for something like a pharmacy or a bank?
Again, I'm, I'm not sure. It's only ultimately gonna come down to, you know. What ownership decides and what tenants are looking for a space.
Is it fair to say it's going to be a fast food restaurant?
I don't think that that's fair to say.
Again, a fast food restaurant is not proposed. It's a specific use under the code and a fast food restaurant is not proposed on this site.
Alright, so. Will a Michelin, Michelin star restaurant be proposed for this building?
Yeah, this, I guess, Mr. Mr. Mooney, the best way to, to respond to that is, the, the shopping center is not a static. Uh, retail environment. It's very dynamic and. Um, it depends on leasability. It depends on a lot of different factors. So. Flexibility's been brought into this plan to allow for different uses in different locations. Um, could it be a pharmacy? Could it be a bank? Yeah. Uh, could it be a, another, uh, style restaurant that's not a fast food restaurant? Yes, it could. Um. And the, the plan has been designed that way, but the code restricts fast food restaurants in this zone and, uh, they're not proposed here.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Me, Mr. Delaney. I'd like to revisit the issue of the cool pavement technology. In your experience. In shopping centers, for how many years does cool pavement last?
Um, so I, I don't have any experience installing cool paving technologies. Uh, above permeable pavers, so I don't have direct knowledge of their exact lifespan, but based on our research. Um, the pavement technologies are 10, 15 years at best right now.
And what is the lifespan of standard asphalt?
Standard asphalt for a parking lot like this, you know, we would expect 25 years or longer.
So it gets another five years of life perhaps, right?
Five to 10.
Five to 10. So in the interest of the environment, is it a worthwhile? Investment. For the applicant to install cool pavement technology for this shopping center. As a benefit to the residents of West Orange and as a benefit to the environment generally.
I, I think the proposed shopping center and the inclusion of one acre of landscaped areas, um. Already provides a significant environmental benefit to the surrounding area and the entire town as a whole, and reducing the heat island effect. And I believe that transfer in, with the proposed trees and their associated tree canopies would also be substantial. So I think any incorporation of cool paving technologies, uh, above and beyond that. You know, would not be as substantial as what we've already proposed.
But you stated early in your testimony that you had reduced the. Area of asphalt paving. Significantly, I believe, is how you described it.
Correct.
By how many square feet have you reduced the amount of asphalt paving?
Um. It's a little bit tough for me to answer, so what I can tell you is that if our A building is 15,000 square feet approximately. Our B building is also 8,000 square feet approximately. Our C building is another 8,000 square feet. Again, approximately. And our building D, I believe, is just over 5,000 square feet. So right there, we have almost an acre in reduction in, in motor vehicle surface just by swapping it with buildings. Combining that with the fact that we're proposing an acre of landscape islands throughout, we're looking at almost two acres of a, you know, of reduction in motor vehicle surface.
But you have no knowledge as to the roof surface material for those buildings. Am I correct?
I believe they're going with a cool roof technology on the buildings, but again, I will defer that to the architect.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney? Please raise your hand and be identified. Any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Next, we have Joyce.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi, um, my name is Joyce Rudin. Uh, and on Woodland Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why I was promoted to panelist, but. It's okay. Um. Mr. Delaney, you said that, um. At, at the beginning, that in anticipation of this expansion. That all of the drainage issues that would, would be. Um. That, that would be faced by this development, you have already addressed. Is that correct?
Um, I, I may have misspoke slightly when I use the word, if I use the phrase all, a, a lot of the existing issues. Were resolved as a part of that, yes. In anticipation for a proposed development.
A lot of the issues, but not all?
A lot of the issues were, from the existing center were addressed now, and then as a part of the proposed shopping center, we're reducing the flows leaving the site, we're adding additional drainage, and that will finish the process.
Have you ever visited this site during a modest rainfall?
I have, yes.
And what have you, what have you seen?
Um, what I've witnessed out there is long paths of sheet flow and even local channelized flow through the parking lot, you know. Majority of the parking lot just sheet flows to the northern edge, the northern end of the shopping center, and a lot of it is not picked up by inlets. So the proposed plans include, I believe, something like 50 new inlets throughout the site. And those new inlets will shorten those flows and help pick up the water, you know, quicker.
So have you seen the constant flooding that is at that site after a modest rainfall?
I have seen some of the, the puddles and stuff like that throughout it that have occurred, yes.
It's not just puddles. You could walk in and it goes up to your ankles. So it's, it's quite a lot of flooding.
Um, and, and that will be cleared up as. Part of the construction for proposed development.
Are you aware of the brand new DEP inland flooding rules?
For better or for worse, I am, yes.
And is this, is this proposal in compliance with all of this, especially since you mentioned that there are woodlands? I mean, wetlands in the back?
So the wetlands, we are not touching in the rear of the property. None of our proposed improvements have anything to do with that or would have any impact thereof. Uh, as far as the new regulations go, I don't believe that they're applicable to this. The flood hazard regulations don't apply because we don't have any. Um, streams. Or studied streams on or near the property that would affect it. Um. And as far as the new stormwater management regulations go, I don't believe that those apply to this site for two reasons. The first is that this project was deemed complete. Uh, as in front of the board before there, they were enacted, and those regulations provide for exceptions. The second reason is that even if we did have to comply with those regulations, because we're reducing impervious coverage, I believe we would be able to. Show the same calculations that we're reducing every time interval.
Are you positive?
Uh, I am not 100% positive. I would have to rerun the models, um, but I'm fairly confident in that.
Are you, are you familiar with our ordinance, which encourages electric, uh, vehicle supply and service equipment? And make ready parking spaces?
I, I am, yes, and we're providing 48 charging stations throughout the site.
Can you tell me what percentage are we supposed to, are we supposed to, um, comply with?
Uh, 4% of the proposed parking is required to be EV.
Correct. Wouldn't, wouldn't that bring the total up? From your proposed number, which was, I believe. Forty seven? Shouldn't it be? More like 50? Fifty six?
Um, I. So let me double check the calculation. So we're providing for 1,000.
I, I'm sorry, 59?
So we're providing for 1,156 physical parking spaces on site. So 4% of that would be 46, I believe. Then, yeah, so 4% of 1,156 is 47.
Are any of these made ready or handicap accessible? As they are required by our ordinance?
That is correct. The ordinance requires that 5% of these EV charging stations be ADA accessible, um, and we are providing. At least five, I think we're providing just over 5% as ADA accessible.
Are you considering using any bio swells to? Uh, as part of the landscaping in the parking lot to reduce coverage, increase trees and landscaping, and reduce the heat island effect? And wouldn't that meet the requirements for green improvements?
Um, so. We are exempt from the requirements for green improvements because we don't have to incorporate any detention basins or BMPs. Uh, the bio retention swells that you're proposing would only, could only go in the landscape islands that we have on site. So there would be no further heat island effect reduction or anything like that. Um, and, and we did look at incorporating them on the site specifically in those landscape islands. But as I mentioned earlier, the site is incredibly steep in a lot of areas, and these landscape islands. Um, account, you know, provide changes in grade, so it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to convert those to by our attention basins.
But could you, if you were asked?
Only in very few select areas.
Okay, I just wanna get quickly to, um, the, the drawing. Um, I was a little startled to see that you have refuse, um, areas in the front of the. Of the, um, development. That's the first thing that people are gonna see when they drive by Prospect Avenue.
So you're referring.
On the side near, near.
By building D?
Ex- exactly.
Okay. Um, so. We are proposing refuse enclosure there. There is an existing refuse enclosure there attached to the Verizon building, so we're just relocating it slowly, sorry, slightly and expanding it. Um, but to your point, it is, you know, kind of front and center. On the development, and that's the only one that would really be exposed to the public view. So for that one, actually for all of them, we're proposing to construct those to make them architecturally similar to the building, so it'll blend in. And then the gates along the front of them will be attractive architectural style gates, so they're not gonna be ugly wood ones or chain link fence or anything like that.
But nonetheless, there'll be a garbage, uh, facility right in front of the park, of the shopping center. Is it possible you can move that someplace else? And in addition, you also have refuse collections. Close to where the, uh, neighbors live. In the back of the buildings in, and I guess it's building A. You're putting. Garbage, uh, facilities right there, right next to the neighbors, abutting them.
That is correct. So those refuse enclosures behind buildings A and B were designed to be up against those buildings. Um, as a way to pull it away from the neighbors. Again, those are gonna be screened, they'll be taken care of regularly, so there should be no odors coming from them. Uh, as far as building D goes, you know, attached to the existing Verizon building, there really is no alternative to that refuse enclosure. The only option we would have is to relocate it entirely behind the main building. And but from a practical perspective, that would never function correctly. You'd be requiring the tenants to take their trash all the way around behind the building, and, and that's just something that. They probably would not do. So rather than with garbage being built up outside of those stores, we'd rather provide a proper enclosure for them.
You, you said that you are moving it to that area, so why, why? Not leave it where it is, or why not hide it better? It's going to be directly on the street. And all the residential area where you're, you're putting. In the garbage enclosures next to, um, next to their homes. You said in some cases, they're just one foot away, and that can attract rats.
Um, alright, so ju- just to clarify, for building D, so that's by the Verizon building, we are siding it slightly, but it, it, the existing enclosure does front on Prospect Avenue. Um, so we're just relocating it slightly. A- as far as buildings A and B go, no, we're, we're more than one foot away from the property lines. These are. For the most part, these refuse enclosures are up against the buildings themselves. That we're proposing. So a lot of them are. 50 feet or more from the property line.
Would it be possible to design this? Um, site so that you are not requesting so many ordinances? Especially on, along the front of the proper. And couldn't the stores and the parking be moved back so that you meet the requirements of the ordinances?
So as I showed earlier in the plans, this, the required setbacks for this site are quite extreme, 300 foot front yard, 100 foot side yards. The only way to, to construct new buildings on this site and have it really comply with those setback requirements would either be to tuck it behind the main building. Which really would not be practical or attractive to tenants, um, or to attach it to the front of the main building itself. And creating, you know, a larger parking mass. As our larger building mass, which is what we're trying to avoid.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Rudin. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Rudin. Your time is up. Do any members of the public have any more questions? Do any members of the public have any more questions for Mr. Delaney about his testimony?
Next up, we have Andy. Okay.
Hello, sorry, I was just wrest- wrestling for the mute button there. I've, I've been told I sound better on mute as well. But I just had a really, a couple of quick questions, more just points of clarification more than anything else. The first question was very similar to the one that Mr. Dana Miller raised earlier about the entrance, the entry point, the Eagle Rock Avenue, the, the, the traffic island there. Is there any kind of pedestrian management planned there, given that that traffic island is the. Exit point for, or, or the point at which the crosswalk ends when you're crossing Eagle Rock Avenue? Is there any kind of pedestrian management there? Because otherwise pedestrians using that crosswalk will, uh, will be, as they are at the moment, more or less marooned at that, uh. At that, uh, that traffic island.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So some of the pedestrian upgrades that we're including there are the addition of new striped crosswalks to help provide and delineate that for the pedestrians. Um, you know, they will still have the ability to. You know. Stop and rest at that island. You know, stop and rest at that island before they can keep, you know, keep going across the majority of the entrance slash exit. Uh but really the biggest upgrade that we're making is by narrowing that drive aisle up, that entrance up, or. Reducing the distance that pedestrians have to cross to travel it. Right now, it's it's pretty wide and it takes a while to cross and by narrowing it up, it'll help reduce that exposure time.
Yeah, excellent, because uh as as somebody who, you know, crosses that, uses that crosswalk, it can be a little bit difficult getting, you know, from that. Traffic islands anywhere else. And I imagine if it's going to be pretty busy, then it's it's only going to get worse. Anyway. Uh another just quick point of clarification just related to an earlier question. So the correct, so just so I'm. Understanding this correctly, the overall footprint of the site isn't actually going to change. So there's no sort of encroachment onto the. This or the wooded areas or maybe the wetlands that were that were featured on the the earlier sort of satellite image that we saw at the very start of the presentation, the. The footprint is more or less going to stay the same, particularly at the back of the existing structure. Correct?
More or less that is correct. The only area we're expanding beyond those existing limits of development is just right behind the main building. Where where we're expanding the pavement slightly to accommodate um the loading docks for the target.
Got it. So we're talking about just a very sort of slight encroachment. It's not really. It's not really going to impact sort of the the native wildlife or anything significantly, no?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, and just a couple of questions about building A. Um has there been sort of any kind of noise study that's potentially been conducted? Because, you know, obviously there's going to be a lot of increased traffic, potentially very close to the folks living on Terrace Avenue, I believe it's called there. Um and with respect sort of the the noise and sort of additional traffic that's resulted from, you know, hopefully business booming. You know, what's the um what's the the policy around sort of the the proximity of the refuse to the the houses there? Sorry, kind of a double barrel question, I know.
Well, that's that's fair enough. So the refuse first, so we're proposing to keep those tight up against the existing buildings to provide a setback. Um to the residences, so that should not be an issue. And of course, we'll have regular refuse pickup, you know. Once, twice a week, wherever the tenants need to help mitigate any kind of issues with that. As far as a noise study goes, there has not been a noise study conducted for these proposed improvements. But of course, any improvements that we're doing here on the site, they'll have to comply with the township's noise ordinance.
Awesome. And then just one last question. I know I'm I'm at time. Uh building C, is it going to be constructed with any particular restaurant in mind? So you know, the configuration of the building or anything like that, or is it, you know, potentially going to be sort of multi-use? I know that there's a lot of fast casual restaurants that are constructed and configured in a particular type of way. I'm just wondering about the. The kind of the 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 reusability of the building, if that's if that's even a word.
But that's a good question. So I mean, the building that we're proposing is ultimately what we would like to build. There might be slight modifications. You know, more so interior and with signage that any new tenant would need. Um but as far as the drive through in the building footprint goes, it you know, it is what we're proposing.
Excellent. And then one last question, I promise, and then I'll 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 shut up. So. Um there's currently an Italian restaurant, Franks, on the site at the moment. Is that going to be something that's displaced? Or is that going to be something that's moved to sort of building A? Because I think, you know, we're talking about sort of community and what what have you and kind of eliminating a a small family business is kind of the the antithesis of that. I was just wondering if there if there's going to be accommodations kind of made for, you know, those those folks there, or are we eliminating a. Family-run business for the for the for the sake of a giant corporation, as much as I love Target.
Uh the proposed target won't occupy that footprint. I don't believe that we're displacing them at all, uh but that's a question better suited for ownership.
Awesome. Thank you. That's uh that's everything. Appreciate them in overtime. So thank you all for listening to me ramble on.
Okay, thank you very much for your questions. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have two more. Uh next up is Sally. And Sally, if you're muted, just if you can unmute your mic.
Hi, okay.
Name to the record, please.
Just so you Sally Malanga Ridge Road, just so you know, I have to come on as a panelist. In order to unmute myself. Is a uh Mister Delaney, is a McDonald's Wendy's Burger King considered? A fast casual restaurant?
I don't believe by definition that those are considered fast casual restaurants.
So those are not likely to be the restaurants going into that uh those buildings there in the front?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh what is the purpose of a three hundred foot setback?
Um I'm going to defer that to our planner.
Okay, and and why would? Fast food drive-throughs not be permitted within a setback?
Again, I'll defer for that to our planner.
You mentioned that it was difficult to work within the setbacks. So do you have any comments about that?
Correct. From engineering perspective, it was diff- you know, it's difficult to design within the three hundred and one hundred foot setbacks that are required on site, you know, as I mentioned. If we're to have to comply with that for buildings A, B, uh and the proposed C building, we would basically be attaching these buildings to the existing main building. And just creating one much larger building mass, uh which is now what this applicant intends to do.
Right, so now in terms of congestion, though, the fast food restaurants are at the very front. Of the shopping center.
Just as a point of clarification, again, we're not proposing any fast food restaurants here.
Okay. I'm going to switch gears and ask you about the R six wooded zone. Is is there any? Specific status to that property, for example, um. Would we have to be concerned about future development there? Are you selling the property to?
There was no testimony about that. We're not, we're going to move on.
Uh the R six zone, are you willing to put a conservation easement on it?
There was no testimony about that. We're going to move on.
The Verizon building, uh I'm noticing from the plans that there is no landscaping around that building. I'm wondering if you can optimize that building with some landscaping.
Um there is some landscaping provided along the frontage of it. Um so there's landscaping provided on the southern side of the building, and there are some landscape islands provided on the northern side. Then right now, we're proposing some pat-, you know, pedestrian patios throughout that area. Um and I'm sure we can incorporate, you know, some landscaping on those, but again, I'll defer that for our landscape architect.
Yeah, and um. The idea that you are adding one acre of landscaping to thirty five acres is. Okay, but it's not optimum. And the ordinance says you must have one tree for every ten parking spaces. And the intent of that is shade. Uh I see in front of the Verizon building a pretty vast area where there may not be any shade. Because you're not putting a tree every ten spaces. Would it be possible for you to reconsider that?
So that specific portion of the ordinance that requires one s- tree for every ten spaces. Um does not require that they be contained within the parking lot footprint themselves, rather that portion of the ordinance just reflects that you can. For every ten spaces, you have to provide one tree, and that can be around the perimeter of the of the parking lot. Um based on our plans, we're proposing, give me one second to get the exact number. Sorry, bear with me. We're per- we were required to have one hundred and twenty five trees based on the proposed number of parking spaces, and we are providing one hundred and twenty five trees. Throughout the parking lot and along its immediate perimeter, and the landscape architect will be able to show you exactly where that goes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public have any more questions, Mr. Delaney? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, and apologies for panelist confusion. I'm just going to unmute uh who's next. So we have Roz next.
Okay, hi, Roz Moskowitz Belsky. I noticed that you don't have a pedestrian crossing in front of the Chipotle restaurant. Um would you be willing to put one in? Because it's a very busy pedestrian crossing and the parking lot is really. Opposite the doorway.
Uh we are proposing a crosswalk directly at that corner.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the diagonal crosswalk leading to the Verizon building. I'm talking about one. That's more in front of the Chipotle building that goes to the parking lot.
Correct. So we're we're providing a diagonal crosswalk that goes from the Chipotle to the parking field itself.
Well, I I just, I I'm there very often. I don't, I don't feel that people are going to be using that diagonal crossing. They're not going to go out of their way to get to their car, which is closer to the Whole Foods entrance possibly.
Understood. We yeah, we can look into that and see if the addition of it, the addition of an additional crosswalk makes sense in this location.
Thank you.
Hey, are you done, Miss Pilski?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delaney on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, lastly, we have Christine. So Christine, you are good to go.
Hi, Christine Bosco. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, uh Mister Delaney, I just have a question. You were talked about the garbage trucks. And how they're going to go around to the back of the building, right? And they're going to be entering, I'm assuming off of Eagle Rock and going around the back.
That's how they would service the main building, yes.
Okay, but then I thought, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you said something about them exiting onto Prospect.
That would be correct, yes, they'd be exiting.
So how is how is that going to work? Are they coming back around? On the south side of that building, or are they going around to the north side of the building and then coming around?
Correct. So they would go around the around the back of the main building, so that's the westerly side of the building. It would continue to the north. Um and we're wrapped just in front of building A for only, you know, a short distance. And then it would take that first northern drive aisle that we're proposing um directly onto Prospect Avenue. And this minimizes any conflict with the cars on the site and any pedestrians.
Well, they would still hit the cars on the site, though, that are parking over by A and B building, correct? And also the the lower parking?
No, there would be no conflict with parked cars and the refuse.
Oh, so they're going behind A and B? I'm confused.
They can go behind A and B if they so choose, but more than likely, they would just drive along the front of building A in the drive aisle. Uh make a right, so that would be going south now along, you know, toward the the front of the main building. Where they would be going left onto the the exit drive.
Okay, so that ingress egress that that at the northern part of the shopping center has a traffic light, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when I'm looking at the plans, and maybe I'm not seeing this correctly, is there an island? Where the ingress and egress, when they go in, i- is there like a divider between them?
Uh there there is a divider between it. You'll notice that as you go, you know, west, closer to the building, the that landscape island disappears. And it becomes a striped island. Um the reason for that is to accommodate the truck movements going out that way. But as you come closer to Prospect Avenue, it is a landscaped divider.
Okay, it's a landscape divider, but those buildings A and B and also the the Mavis. Is there a landscaped or or is it a a divider itself from that ingress egress? Because when I'm looking at this and I see them coming in, right, I'm seeing the divider between the road, but I'm also seeing it in front of those buildings, A and B. There is, when you first go in, there's a right, you can go into where the Mavis is, correct? But there is, there is a a blockage there, though, in front of that, you know, not the to to make the turn, but before that. Um the only reason I'm questioning this is because people who come in and they go to the Mavis. Or they go to the A and B, probably more than it Mavis and the building, I guess it would be the A building, maybe it's the B building. But if they're coming out, they can't go back out into that um. Entrance where the Mavis is, correct, onto that ingress egress that goes onto Prospect? Because if they do, they're going to hit the barrier, the island there. They're not going to be able to make a uh. Left-hand turn to to go on to that to to get to the light.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to explain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions, Mr. Delaney, about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any, seeing none.
Okay, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for an excellent presentation.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh just for the record, I want to thank the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board for their uh input on this application. Uh Mister Meese, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh given the hour, I think we can hopefully get through two more witnesses. One would be Allison. Mathern from Target, uh and the other one would be uh Jim Welsh, the landscape architect. I know there's been a lot of questions of the landscaping, so hopefully we can. We can get to Mister Welsh tonight. But I'd like to have uh Allison, I see you here on the plan somewhere on the.
I am here. Yeah.
You have to raise your your hand to be sworn in.
Okay.
I done mute myself, I'm sorry, Ms. Bathern. Uh do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You state your name, spell your last name, and give your business address?
Yes, my name is Allison Mathern, last name is Emma's and Mary, A T H E R N. My business address is one thousand Nicolet Mall in Minneapolis, Minnesota, five five four zero three.
And Miss Mathern, would you please review your uh your position and your job duties with Target?
Of course, yeah. Um and first of all, I'd just like to thank you all for taking your time this evening for this special hearing on behalf of Target. We really appreciate it. We know it's late. I will try to be as quick as possible. Um I am a senior development manager with Target, which means that I oversee site design and entitlement. For our new store development.
And as as part of that, you're very familiar with what's proposed here. Uh we've come and just give a very brief description of what Target is proposing in connection with its uh main store use as well as its uh. Fulfillment Center, which is the last mile delivery service, right?
Yes, correct, yes. So um as as already testified too, we will be taking the three spaces, the former Kmart, the Staples and the Dollar Tree. Obviously doing a major internal renovation to accommodate on the ground level or the fir- first level, a typical Target store. Approximately a hundred thousand square feet. We will have a CVS Pharmacy, an optical um center. We will have a Starbucks with no seating, just a counter, um but a full-service Starbucks. There will be an Ulta Beauty Store in Store, as we call it, as well as about ten thousand square feet of grocery. Um in addition to our usual retail merchandise of, you know, clothing, electronics, the whole gamut of a typical Target. Um the lower level of the store will accommodate all of the stock for the existing first level store. Um and then there is a portion of the lower level for which we are seeking approval to use as a. Delivery center. Um it it's a newer concept for Target. It basically brings um. Merchandise from other stores pre-sorted to for delivery to local um. Customers and residents. Um so it's a a fairly small operation. There's no storage of product. Um warehousing of product in that portion of the facility. It really is just shifting pre-sorted boxes from larger vehicles to local, you know, smaller local delivery drivers. Um other than that, we have um as already testified to, twenty four customer drive-up parking stalls in the parking lot. Hopefully you are all familiar with that, where you stay in your car and a a Target employee brings everything you've ordered online to your car. Including now Starbucks. As far as sustainability, I know that's something that's been. As far as sustainability, I know that's something that's been touched on or asked about quite a bit. We have a laundry list of internal things that we do. Um, I will, a couple of them are simply, you know, LED bulbs. We are using some reclaimed wood on the interior finishes. Um, we have occupancy sensors on most of our different rooms and restrooms. Um, we are using a, what's called a transcritical CO2 system for our refrigeration, which is um much more environmentally sound than the typical units. Additionally, we're replacing all of the mechanicals for, at the existing building, which will all be newer, obviously much more energy efficient than what is there today. Low-flow water fixtures, plumbing fixtures, et cetera, um, hand dryers in the restrooms, no paper towel dispensers. Um, that's pretty much it in a very quick nutshell. Um, Greg, if there's anything I missed, please redirect me and otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the inside or outside of Target.
Sure, just a couple of, of brief follow-up questions. Uh, although the architect will review your proposed facade, it's fair to say there'll be a brand-new facade on this building?
That is correct, yes, with different finishes, yes, and usual, of course, Target signage and logos.
The, the customer pickup that you mentioned, that's all in the front of the store, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And there is no customers that'll be accessing the rear of the store in the back by the loading.
No, there is no customer access to the rear or lower level of the store whatsoever.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, of Ms. Mather?
Hey, um, we're gonna start in the reverse now. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to ask about proposed store hours.
Yes, typically, um, it's 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week.
Okay, perfect. And the typical delivery hours?
Similar to store hours.
Okay, and you mentioned that the customer pickup, uh, there's availability for, for all of what you're offering, including Starbucks, Ulta Beauty?
Correct, yep. They drive, there's both drive-up and order pickup, so you're able to order online, either go into the store to pick it up or the drive-up, the employees bring it out to you. Yes, but yeah, anything, pretty much anything in the store.
Okay, as far as the um proposed last-mile delivery service that, that uh would be serviced by the lower level, um, what does that look like? Is that similar to, you know, Whole Foods has drivers, uh, yeah, I, I don't know, is you know, kind of an Uber? What, what's the situation there?
Yeah, it's an evolving um opportunity for us, but yes, we liken it to Instacart. It's actually, our business is called Shipt um that we use, S-H-I-P-T. Um, the, really the only difference between Instacart and ship deliveries is that the Instacart drivers are doing the shopping, and in this case, they're not doing the shopping. They're, they're pre-sorted orders that they come and pick up and take out from the store.
So then, in that case, it's going to be primarily people in, you know, the typical commuter vehicle um coming to, to pick up an order that's split. So they're a third party. They get a, a notification on a cell phone and they come to pick it up. Do you have a designated, they're not going to be, you know, uh, going to the back or I, I'm wondering, you have someone coming up from the first level, meeting them in front of the store and they're pulling away or?
They will be in the rear. That will be, they will be accessing it in the rear, yes.
Okay. In the rear, uh, and maybe, maybe, excuse me, I'm sorry, maybe Mr. Lenny can jump in. So in the rear, not in the flow of the trucks, so is it the, in the rear, close to one of the parking lots in the rear? I'm trying to envision this.
I believe that they are, um, and we can, I can actually get more information if you need more specifics, um, for the next, obviously this is gonna be continued, so for the next meeting. Um, but I believe that generally they are phased and they come to, you know, the vehicles come only two at a time in timed intervals to pick up their packages. So it's, it's a very organized and regimented process. Um, again, it, it's evolving on our side a bit, but it is not, um, we, we don't have a whole fleet of cars just sitting there waiting to pick up packages. It's um again, timed and organized so that there's only a certain number of vehicles there at a time to pick up packages for deliveries.
Okay, yeah, so long is, so long is the, um, I know there's a plan and that it's uh, yeah, I, I can just ask, Mr. Lenny, was that, was the ship, uh, you know, service factored into the uh planning of the, the, the rear of the store and how that flows?
Yeah, so we did work with Target on that, um, to incorporate it, you know, to, to Allison's point, you know, it's only two cars coming at a time, so if it was happening in the rear, which is where we would have get for it to happen, they could just occupy two parking spaces in the back.
Okay.
Otherwise just being used by employees operationally for the most part.
Appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen, do you have any questions?
No, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Ms. Mather. Now, you've mentioned before about the pickup. Um, how does that, we, we have a lot of concerns tonight from our Public Safety Advocate Board and uh, and we're Pedestrian Safety Advocate Board and, and others. How does the line of sight impact the uh people who are the pedestrians who are walking out while we're talking about curbside pickup?
I'm not sure what you mean. It's not curbside. It is in the parking lot. There are designated parking spaces for it. Um, there is a striped crosswalk from the building to the center line of those parking spaces, which is where our team members will traverse. And then, as uh Mr. Delaney testified to, there are also some striped aisles between the parking spaces, which allow our cus- our, to, excuse me, team members to make the deliveries to the vehicles without having to go into the parking lot itself.
So it won't be curbside pickup at the building?
No curbside pickup, no.
Okay, and you speak about traversing the, the vehicles you're talking about, what, how are they gonna traverse out of the parking lot? Are they gonna go by all the new stores on the north end? Are they gonna go out down toward the south end, toward where Jersey might have mentioned before? So how do they impact, um, again, I'm talking about pedestrian safety because you, you have moving vehicles. Your, part of your model is moving vehicles. So how do we, uh, between them and, and your delivery trucks and things of that nature, how do, which way are they gonna be uh exiting and entering the facility?
I'm, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, you're referring to the, the customer pickup in the front?
No, in the rear of the building, and I'm sorry, in the rear of the building. The delivery service, correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, so, no, 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 you're fine. Um, as, as we, as I said before, it's basically, cuz, uh, sorry, um, but, sorry, I just totally lost my words.
That's okay. What I'm looking for is just what you're, whi- whi- which way are you exiting the property? So this way, I'm just worried about if you're gonna have a heavy flow of, of tractor trailers, semis, you know, or fixed trucks or, or vans or cars, whatever. What is your direction of flow? And as an impact of the safety of the public that's walking around, especially when you have new buildings being constructed that you want people to visit?
And, I think you have a better question for Mr. Delaney to answer than.
For a traffic engineer.
Okay, oh, well, if we can save that, I just wanna put that on the record just so we have it, so we can ask that later, okay? Other than that, I think we, we've covered that. I understand your model of the building and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiraldo. Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have a question, Ms. Man. Thank you very much for your great presentation. Awesome. We appreciate, we appreciate you being here. Quick question, as a former retail executive and everything else myself, when it comes to supply chain management, which of course is the big thing, and with holiday levels and holiday inventory, will it be adjustments in your traffic flow and, you know, accommodations with staffing to accelerate your, your disloading of merchandise and loading of deliveries and everything else based upon, you know, holiday scheduling and um, you know, business needs?
I honestly can't speak to that. Um, I don't wanna testify to something that is not 100% accurate. I can certainly, um, you know, get some information from our team and bring it back for next time as to, you know, obviously, yes, our customer traffic and our deliveries ramp up around the holidays. Um, I can get some deep, more detailed information on that, but again, I, I, that's not my area of, of expertise, so I don't wanna testify to something incorrectly.
No, no, thank, thank you very much.
I'll make a note of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alper, do you have any questions?
No, not this time, thank you.
Council President Williams, do you have any questions?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Mather, for your information. I do have a question about the uh interior ancillary services that Target will provide. So you mentioned um a Starbucks and a couple of other um types of stores. Wanted to ask, um, you, Ulta Vi- Ulta Beauty, is there, are there gonna be vision services, salon services, automotive services? Could those be services that are added on at a later time, or this is exclusively what's been presented and that's it?
Well, I did mention we will have an optical department, um, where they do exams and you can order glasses, have them fitted, whatever. Um, but no, there would be no um automotive, I apologize, I forget the other thing you mentioned, but no, there would be no um other businesses coming down the pike, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mayor McCartney?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Mather, uh, as far as the delivery services for the hours of operation, will it be strictly within the hours of operations? And I'm sorry if you said it already, but what are those hours of operation?
The delivery hours would be similar, if not exactly the same, as the store, which is generally 8:00 AM to 11, 11:00 PM. Um, that said, for both the store and what would be the delivery service area, um, we do typically have employees on-site um, or third-party cleaning crews, doing maintenance, et cetera, um, between those off-hours, between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So, um, you know, there will be, could, can and will be folks in the building, again, doing cleaning or maintenance activities. But again, the store hours and the delivery hours would be very similar, and they're projected to be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
This may be a question for the architect, but we didn't hear any testimony on security camera, cameras? Will there be security cameras around the building?
There definitely will be. Um, I cannot testify to anything other than that. Um, if you have more detailed questions, though, we can certainly provide more information.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Um, Vice Chairman Wilks?
Yes, I'm, um, the mayor took away my thunder with the security. I was gonna ask that question about, um, no, no problem, no problem. That's what happens when I got to go, I'm going last now.
Gotta change up the batting order.
Exactly. At this time of night, I see it. Um, just wanted to know how much security is usually, you guys usually hire? I mean, how much do you rely upon local police or anything like that? And how much do you, you guys have people monitoring the lots, monitoring, monitoring your deliveries? How do you guys set up with security, I mean, you know, with your familiarity with building these type of stores out around the country?
Um, again, not at all my area of expertise. I can certainly get more information, but I can tell you, again, we do have the security cameras um at all of our exits, watching the deliveries. Um, we do have um asset protection folks that are involved with every store individually. Um, but other than that, I would have to get more information from our asset protection team.
Okay, so the security cameras are monitored by whom? I mean, would be somebody on?
I honestly, I'm not sure if it's on site. I believe it is, but I, again, I don't wanna testify incorrectly. I will find out and I can provide that information.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. That, that's enough questions for me.
Thank you. Ms. Lany, do you have any questions?
Uh, I do, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you. All right, so I, I have some specific questions really about the fulfillment services. Um, and one question I have, is this something that is becoming customary in Target stores? You know, currently going forward, or is this uh something that's somewhat rare?
Um, I really can't, it, I, again, I don't want to misspeak. It's not something that we have the opportunity to do very often. Um, this store presents that unusual opportunity, given the lower-level square footage that's available. Um, it is a feature that we have currently in one other location active. I know we are looking at it in other areas, so it's really um, an emerging part of our business that we are exploring.
Okay, and then you talked about the, the vehicles that are picking up, that are doing the last mile. What kind of vehicles are they?
Um, I believe our um application stated that they are passenger vehicles up through, like a small Sprinter van type of vehicle.
Okay.
Sort of thing you would see, you know, from other local delivery services, yep.
And I don't know if this is really a question for the traffic expert, but how many times a day would people be, you know, these passenger vehicles or Sprinter trucks be coming to the store to pick up?
I, I would prefer to defer that to the traffic engineer, yeah.
Sure, and then. And, and it's the same question, a related question is how long is each pickup?
Again, I think that would have to be discussed with the traffic engineer.
Okay, and then the same, the trucks that are delivering, are they delivering specifically for the fulfillment center uh services, or are they?
Yes.
So, so how many times a day does th- those trucks come in?
Um, again, I think we have
I think the traffic report said four.
Specified to, two to four a day, and yes, they are specifically for the last-mile delivery. They are pre-sorted packages, so they really just go from the truck to the delivery vehicle. Um, as I said, there's no sorting in the building. There's no storage of product for this use in the building.
And is it um seven days a week?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I will, I will get back to you if that is incorrect.
And again, the, the, I also have the question about the times, I mean, because if they're delivering to people's homes, I wouldn't expect that they'd be delivering them at 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, typically they do end earlier. Um, I believe I would call it about 6:00 PM would typically be sort of the end last wave, um. But, you know, we obviously always hate to limit ourselves. You never know what will happen.
Okay, all right. Uh, those are all my questions for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Back off, I have a quick question.
Okay, I'm sorry, who? Uh, Mr. Jensen?
Um, if I can ask, just what is the uh amount of square footage down on the lower level that uh the ship business will take up? And will there be additional signage for that type of business?
There would not be any additional signage, no. And um right now, we are reserving about 50% of the lower level, so about 50,000 square feet for the potential use.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor McCartney?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Ms. Mather just mentioned that there was another location that has this delivery service. Can you tell us where that is?
I believe it's in Georgia.
Oh.
Nowhere local.
Okay, thank you.
And it's very new, so uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Mather, will there also during the um after-hours, will there be stock replenishment during the store closed hours from 11 to 8?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, like I said, they would be there the same time as sort of after the maintenance crew and the cleaning crew, but yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you. Um, will there be onsite security in the form of a private security car with flashing lights of any sort?
For Target specifically, no.
Um, okay, do you have any information on the number of police interactions at a target? At an average target?
I do not.
In a town of this size?
I do not. I mean, that is something our, our asset protection team would have to weigh in on. I, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do have a few. Uh, we'll start with Evelyn. Okay, Evelyn, you're good to go. Just unmute yourself, please.
Okay, thank you. So I, I heard that there's going to be a CVS in
So I, I heard that there's going to be a CVS in the new Target store. That is correct. One that we currently have.
I cannot speak to that. We have CVSs in most of our stores. I, I can't tell you about the business impact to another local location.
Does anyone online know what the impact will be?
We have, we have to just focus on the testimony that she gave, okay? So you can ask questions of her about her testimony, please.
No further questions.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, next we have, Kevin is up next. I'm going to allow Kevin to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Ms. Matherne, good evening. Thank you for your testimony. It seems that Target has a very strong environment, social and governance policy and program. Is, is that fair to say?
I would agree with that, yeah.
Now, I saw an interesting quote on the Target website pertaining to ESG. And the quote was, and may even know the person who spoke this, that we want our guests to turn to Target first when they think about sustainability. We know that the only way to make that possible is by putting both people and the planet at the center of our efforts as we co-create with our guests, our partners and the communities we serve. That was Amanda Nunes, Senior Vice President of Corporate Responsibility. So you, you may know her. So if that is the position of Target, how would you feel about more islands with more plants and trees in the parking lot? And utilizing green pavement technology for the parking lot surface itself?
That's really not a question for Ms. Matherne.
She did not testify to that, and I don't think she's qualified to answer that.
I'm just asking for her opinion.
She didn't, she didn't speak to that, so her opinion.
Spoke about other sustainability aspects of the building.
The building, not the parking lot. So you can ask her a question about the building, that's fine.
Were you involved in the design of the parking lot?
I was not, no.
All right, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
And seeing none from here.
This portion will be closed. Thank you. Mr. Meese, we're going to call this at 11 o'clock. Do you think you want to put on somebody now to get started, or do you want to hold to?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to call Mr. Welsh to talk about the landscape.
Go right ahead, absolutely.
He's been waiting all night and for 15 minutes, I think he can move quite a bit of, of things.
Fantastic.
Ms. Matherne, thank you very much. Jim, or, I don't see you through the screen here. Jim Welsh?
Fortunately, my camera's not working tonight, Greg.
Camera's not working. Mr. Chairman, I think we're done for tonight.
So he needs to have his camera to testify?
Well, it's hard to review a landscape plan without.
I can, I can present.
Did he use the diagrams of Mr. Delaney? Could he use the diagrams of Mr. Delaney?
Greg, I can share my screen, you just can't see me, that's all.
Oh, all right. If you can share your screen, then that's great.
I have to, I have to swear, man.
So if you can testify that, you know, you've got your arm raised and you get sworn in, then that's great.
Yeah, Mr. Welsh, can you tell me, I would like you to raise your right hand. Can you tell me you're doing that?
I am doing that.
Okay. All right. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Could give the board your name, spell your last name and give us your business address, please?
James Welsh, best name is W E L S H. Business address, I work with MKW and Associates. We're at 39 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey, 07070. I'm a senior landscape architect with MKW and Associates.
Did you give us the benefit of your education, sir?
Graduated from Rutgers University with a CS in Landscape Architecture, Environmental Design in 1991. I'm currently licensed in the state of New Jersey. Also licensed in the state of New York, have been licensed in New Jersey since 1994. And I have testified in other, in front of other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Great, and you provide, and you reviewed or and or created the landscape plan for the site?
Correct.
Okay, we, unless any member of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Welsh as a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Welsh, I know you have exhibits to show with the, to the board tonight, it's part of their agenda? And if you could step through it to show the existing conditions and how the site's going to be transformed?
All right. All right, just here is just a, as a starter, an aerial photo of the existing site. Some of the things I'm going to say are going to repeat a little bit of what Sean, Mr. Delaney had said earlier, that this parking lot, this site is very dominated currently by an asphalt parking lot. Very limited trees, and I guess I'm just.
Mr. Welsh, excuse me, is this picture part of the set that we, that the board was given?
Greg, can you answer that? I sent it off to you on Monday.
Yeah, this, this is on your agenda.
Okay, just want to be sure. Thank you.
Could you identify the, just the date or the page number, whatever, if, on it?
The bottom left of this shows the date of Saturday, May 27, 2023, the date of this aerial photograph.
Thank you.
Okay, just showing you the real conditions. We, we did also create a series of site plans rendered, you know, color rendered, plans showing existing conditions that, that it's comparable to our proposed conditions. So this is existing conditions. I'm also going to walk you through. This is our site plan of what it looks like. Once again, you can see the perimeter of where the asphalt ends on the north edge and the west edge and the, the existing landscape. There is a little bit of lawn and some trees along Prospect Avenue to the east side and along Eagle Rock to the south side. There are about 20 trees interior to the parking lot currently. These are the trees on the inside. We worked with the owner to plant some trees along the edge of Prospect last fall. Planted about 15 new shade trees along the, the edge there. And they were planted with the thought of, you know, the, the landscape and the whole plan moving forward. So they're in the right place and to do what we want to do moving forward. Let's see, existing, so we have the, the large open parking lot, 20 trees. Really, there's a total of 28 trees along the perimeter. That includes the newly planted ones last fall, as well as some along the corner here, at the corner of Eagle Rock and Prospect and alone, and some existing going down the side of Eagle Rock as well. There's very little interior low-level planting, we'll call it understory below the trees. Part of our planting plan last fall, we did add some, some grasses and shrubs and, and perennials at the corner here as well. So, so we, we've started to do some improvements with the owners already, and we're looking to continue that as the planning moves on. Just some pictures once again to show the big open parking lot that's there from in front of the Horizon Building, looking towards the, the main building, the Chipotle Corner there. You really don't even notice any trees within the parking lot as part of these views. This is from a little bit more of the northern end of the parking lot, looking back towards the building. So what are we going to do to improve this from a landscape standpoint? This is our demolition plan and tree protection plan and planting removals. The Xs here in, in the interior show the trees that are going to be removed. They have to be removed to work in with the, with the new parking layout. All the trees along the perimeter with this little symbol on them here show plants, trees that are going to be protected to, protected to remain. Each of these individual trees, individual trees will have a barrier with wood and fencing put around it temporarily during construction to protect them. And then the large group at the parking lot, at the, the corner of the parking lot will have one large barrier put around it for the most part. There will be a little bit of work in there when, as Mr. Delaney said, there'll be a new sign installed in there. So we'll have to dig in there and, and work around that, that a little bit. This is just an example up in the top here of the tree protection, wood barrier frame with a little fence around it to kind of keep people, keep the construction workers and the construction out of those areas. These are the trees at the corner. We did receive one comment from the engineer reviewing our plans, that maybe these trees.
I'm not seeing your, your plan changing. Is anyone else?
Okay, let me try sharing again.
No, not working.
I'm trying here.
If I share my screen, can you walk through it?
Let me try one more thing here. How's that? Any better?
Dark.
No, sir. It says you started screen sharing, but nothing's coming up.
Okay, and then we'll go to here. Okay, go ahead, Greg, if you want to, you want to load up?
Here we go.
Okay, so we were at the corner lot showing the.
Can you, can you see my, my, my screen?
No.
No?
No.
No, sir.
All right, let's try this again. Let's.
There you go.
All right, that's not the one I wanted, so.
It's a nice picture, though.
And where is that?
All right. It's a big plant, so it's taken a while to open.
Okay.
All right, can you see that?
Still same picture.
Same picture.
Same picture?
Yes, sir.
Picture building A and B.
All right. How's that?
Yeah.
Parking lot.
All right.
Keep going.
All right, there's the.
Okay, go one more.
He was talking about. Here is the tree swaps. All right, do you see the trees?
These are the trees at the corner. We heard a comment from the engineer reviewing the plan to possibly remove these trees because they're, they're black locusts and they were considered invasive. But we thought they were in decent shape, decent health. We checked with the township forester, Walter Kip, and we have an email from him suggesting that he thinks they should be saved as well, so we would like to continue forward with maintaining those, those trees at the, at the existing corner there. Okay, so let's move on to the next plan. Okay, so what we're seeing here is, I'm going to show you two site plans. The first site plan shows the, now it's a little bit upside down. Okay. This site plan shows the overall landscape with shade trees. The circles with a little dot in the center, all along the perimeter and throughout the, the parking lot represent shade trees throughout the site. So what we have here is we're showing, it, it's the same green areas that Sean Delaney was showing you, but just a little bit more of what the landscape will be in there. The, and then underneath it, the greens represent an understory planting. And we'll touch that on that in the next plan that we show. But for, for now, let's talk about the trees. The trees that we're showing are there to, A, provide shade to the parking lot, which will help cool the, the urban heat island effect that's going on there, but also break down that massive parking lot into different rooms or zones or spaces, so it doesn't feel quite as big. There are also, the trees are there to visually direct people where to go. Setting up these long boulevards coming into the site from Prospect, setting up that long driveway in front of the main building, all the trees along one side of that. And then again, in front of buildings A and B, there's another line of trees there that, you know, we want to, you know, really just make that a nice driving experience, but really directs the cars to move along there as well. In all, we're, we're planting 151 shade trees, the shade trees that will be planted. We're currently calling for about a two-and-a-half-inch caliper planting size, and they'll grow to be much larger trees over time. 27 evergreen trees, 11 ornamental trees, which would be smaller trees, something that might flower like a service berries and sircis, which would be a red bud. And then there's a couple of river birches in there as well. The trees that we're planting, we're, we're planning also on planting more trees along Prospect Avenue to kind of finish that tree line. We started it, we did it in, we did it in the southernmost section, we planted the trees in the middle section already. So now the new trees will be planted in the northernmost section where that, that lip ramp is being removed. We'll continue that streetscape along, along Prospect and making that sidewalk a little bit nicer, walkway to walk there with the trees overhead. The trees that we're going to be planting are four different main types of shade trees. Zelkova's, honey locusts, hackberries and lindens will be the, the four different varieties that we're showing there. Greg, the picture that I'm seeing isn't getting the full site plan. I don't know if you can zoom out just a little bit?
Yeah, every time, it, it just, it doesn't go well, Jim, sorry.
Okay, maybe can you pan left and right so people can see all the way over to Eagle Rock? Because I'm not seeing that in building D.
Are you seeing it now?
I'm stuck right now.
My, my screen is showing the, the tree plan at the intersection.
Okay, good, good. So, okay, so, so these are all the different shade trees out there. I'm not seeing it, so I'm going to talk, just keep on talking here. I, I think that's enough for, for the shade trees. As I said, we have the four different kinds, the hackberries, the honey locusts, the lindens and the zelkova's. Let's go to the next plan then.
Is the board seeing the plan now with the understory?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is the board now seeing a colored plan of the understory?
What is this sheet? I don't know what the sheet is that you're saying, showing.
Isn't it another colored rendering?
Yes, but what's the sheet number? What is it that we're looking at? SP or whatever, something? Yes, but what's the sheet number? What is it that we're looking at? SP or whatever, something? Sheet something of nine, it doesn't have a.
Like of nine, it's, it's called proposed landscape plan, ground cover and shrubs.
Okay.
So Jim, where do you want to start with this?
Okay, so this plan, I just wanted to mention that. What we're looking at is. So we stripped away the shade trees and the couple of different kinds of the colors that are there. The lightest green represents lawn and there's going to be lawn along the, 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 the streetscape along Prospect Avenue. The medium green is lower plantings, ground covers, herbaceous type plants, maybe some ornamental grasses in there. The darker green and the darkest green are shrubs, and the shrubs are going to be, some of them are evergreen, some of them are deciduous in there. But once again, these, these plantings are meant to reinforce the different rooms, the different parking rooms that are out there in the landscape. And breaking that whole parking lot down into multiple different areas, so it's not just one giant parking lot. It, it's broken down into all these little different sections so that you, you feel like, okay, I'm not in this massive area. I feel more comfortable with the trees overhead and now with these greenery on the sides of me as well. So we think that's really going to be a, a huge benefit there. The understory planting, as I said, will be both deciduous and evergreen so that there's something there in all different seasons. There's also going to be some herbaceous plantings, especially in the pink areas. Those are going to be seasonal highlight planting areas. So you're, whether it's mumbeds in the fall or begonias and marigolds in the, in the spring. All different flowers that could happen in those small spaces to really highlight the entry spaces along Prospect as well as along the entry at Eagle Rock. And they'll be changed out seasonally in there. Okay. This is a, a, this is our actual site plan, the black and white that shows the different areas in there where you can see the different masses of plantings that will be happening as well. So it's not just one big planting in there, there's going to be, you know, several different kinds of planting there to create interest. But especially around the entry, it's going to be lower planting, so they maintain site triangles. So that traffic can flow and everybody can see where they have to, they can see the people on the sidewalks, they can see the oncoming cars as well. Let's go to the next one, Greg. What we're seeing now is the, the south side of the site, because there's so much planting in there, we had to do enlargements. And maybe we can get, you know, look at the, the north side of the site.
It's the black and white of the north side?
Okay, black and white of the north side.
Do you want to review the hardscape at all?
Yes, we do. We can go to the hardscape next.
This is the courtyard. Are you seeing this, Jim?
Uh, no, my screen currently went, went black on me. The courtyard is basically, what we're showing here is that the paving is really what we wanted to focus on, because as Sean had mentioned, this is a, we're, we're trying to step it up a notch here. In terms of the look and the feel of this shopping center. The paving throughout the, in front of buildings A, B, C and D are going to be a nicer paving than, than what we're, we're used to. We're going to do a travertine paver in a couple of different ways in front of the buildings and in between some of the, the buildings and some of the areas where you might want to pause and sit for a little bit longer. In front of the buildings, there's going to be two types of paving in there. It's going to be a herringbone pattern for the most part in the pedestrian areas. With a square travertine paver, it's just a little bit darker around the edges. It's going to kind of signify this is the pedestrian zone, and just to break it up a little, there's going to be some of those square edge pavers. Showing where the different lines are within the building, where the different stores are. When you get into more of the area between building A and B. It's a place where people are going to linger a little bit longer. We're hoping, you know, maybe some restaurants will get, become our neighbors there. And that can be a courtyard where some, you know, people can do some outdoor dining, so we'd love to have that happen there. So we changed up the paving in those spaces to be an ashlar paving, which is basically just a different, a different shape of the stone, a different pattern of the stone. But it's still the same tone so that it kind of marries up nicely with the paving out in front of the building. And it still has that same square, slightly darker edge stone around it as well. So it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice feature. That's going to happen between buildings A and B. The, the ashlar behavior and the ashlar behavior, because of the larger spaces over at building D, the spaces in front of some of those stores, we're going to do that over there as well. The pavers, there was a little bit of a concern from, I'm not sure who had mentioned it, but about the, the stones possibly lifting and heaving. All these papers are going to be set on a concrete base and be mortared in, so basically it's going to be concrete. It's just as good as concrete because these pavers are sitting on top of concrete and then they're mortared in there. So what you're seeing now is you can see the lines in the paving coming off the different buildings. Kind of signifying this is where suite one is and suite two is and suite four is. And then the herringbone pattern that signifies more of this is the area that you're just getting on to walk and you won't be pausing so much in there. One of the comments earlier in the night where it was, you know, can there be a little bit of landscape in there? Yeah, I, I think there's a possibility of that. In there, I think it might make things a little bit more, more cozy. I think that's something we could work on with consideration and talk to the owner about that as well. So with that, I think that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions for the board of Mr. Welsh?
Yes, two questions. First of all, can the, on the northerly side that approximates the paddock farm area where you're ninety seven feet away from the, the other home? Can the, can the trees be beefed up on that side? To give more of a resilience in the greenery?
Can you pan over there a little bit, Greg?
You're, you're there, back, no, the other way, the other way. Oh, okay, you could do that.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, yes.
There, there are some trees back, back there. Last time I was at the site, there seemed to be a decent amount of existing vegetation. We can look at it one more time and see if we can squeeze a few more things in there.
Yes.
At the back of the courtyard.
Yeah, pretty much. Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go Fred. It's your floor, sorry.
At the back of the courtyard, this line of trees here and then here and here are all taller arborvitae's that can grow to fifteen and twenty feet high. So this, I think, is going to be our main green wall to kind of separate the back from the, the people side of things. But yeah, I think these other trees to the north of the driveway. We can look to add a few more pieces in there as well.
That would be great. And then if we go to the other side, there was a, a couple of questions about building D with the refuse area. Is there some way to screen the refuse area with more greenery? Without compromising parking or traffic flow?
It's, it's really, the parking area is up against a, a drive aisle. So it, it, you know, it's part, it's, it's, it's kind of tough. I don't, I, I don't think there's much we can do there.
Okay, so it sounds like. Yeah, if there's, could it, if you're going to put up a wall around it, it could, there be a, a living wall where you have vines growing up the wall and be, and presents greenery?
I think we might have. That, that can happen, but it won't be on the prospect side of things.
Okay, why, we're going to have another meeting. Why don't you think about that? If there's something that we could do to, to make that a little more green and a living wall may do that. Not telling you your business, I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions?
No questions with this witness.
Mayor McCartney.
No questions.
Thank you. Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Mr. Alper.
No question.
Mr. Greeno.
No questions.
Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan?
Right here, no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Smeraldo.
No questions.
Mr. Jensen.
Uh, yes, one question. You mentioned the plantings that would change out the mums and the ball. Begonias and marigolds in the spring. What would be the plan for those areas in the winter time?
It, it'll probably be, it could be just a clean mulch bed. Sometimes with the, the seasons, as they've been as warm as they have been, some of the fall plantings can extend a little bit longer, the ornamental cabbages and things like that. It's not a set, not a set plan. It's, it's usually done as part of a yearly meet, you know, an annual maintenance program. But the, the ornamental cabbages are the first thing that comes to my, my mind as, as something that, that's been lasting through the, through the winters recently.
Any other questions, Mr. Johnson?
No, no, this is Sam, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cadoza.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Could you pan across that, the middle where you right now? Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. So the only place that we really see really long areas with no greenery islands, could you go all the way back to the southerly side? Yes, right over there, right there, that, that block proximate to building D. Would it be possible to look at, and Mr. Delaney opened the door for possibility, putting in two more green islands in the middle? So you don't have those really long tracks of cars. Just a possibility to think about for the next meeting, two or three islands right in the middle. Something to think about. Okay. Miss, uh, Ms. Lainey, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, thank you, Chair.
Uh, Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions for this presentation? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for this presentation? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I am seeing a few. We're going to start with Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, thank you again. Mr. Welsh, am I pronouncing your name? Is it Welsh? Is that right?
That's correct, Welsh.
And Mr. Welsh, thank you for your testimony. I am looking at your planting schedule for the shade trees. And I see you call for fifty three of the tilia cordata. And forty seven of the zelkova serrata. Neither one of those is a native tree. Is there a reason why you chose those trees over a native tree? And would it not be preferable to have native trees?
Um, the, these trees are, have proven themselves to be very hardy in, in the parking lots and along streets and, and drive areas in, in New Jersey. We, we, we kind of blended a little bit of the native trees with the, with the other trees. So, um, in terms of form and function, we, we kind of had to, we felt we had to make a little bit of a, a call on that. And you go with some proven winners for, for a parking lot of this size.
But in terms of habitat for birds, bees and butterflies are not native trees preferable?
There, I've, I have no think, knowledge of that, but I've seen birds and, you know, in zelkova trees and I've seen birds in the linden trees, so I, I, I don't think there's any, you know.
Well, my.
Major issue with, with those trees.
Yes, sir. My, my question is, do they provide sustenance? Not whether they are sitting on a branch, but do they provide sustenance for birds, bees and butterflies? Is the answer yes or no, sir?
I, I'm not sure. I, I. I'm not a biologist, I'm not exactly sure.
So at present, you're planting, of those two, you're planting a total of one hundred versus a total of fifty four native shade trees. Is, is that right?
Uh, yes.
I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Welsh? Do any other members of the public have any questions?
We have a, a panelist.
Mr. Rosen, Mr. Rosen.
Yes, thank you. I, I was wondering, I, I see that there's the time limit. But I would like to go back to the first aerial picture. That was shown of the existing vegetation. It was the first.
If we could just get that screen shared once more. Mr. Mees.
And I'll, I will try to be cognizant at the time of it, so it's.
I think it's, uh. Think it's here.
And if it's not possible, I'm supposed to come on, but, but question was, when was that picture taken? Yes, when, what is the date on this picture?
Uh, bottom left, I think it was May of this year.
Of this year?
Yes.
Yep, May twenty seven, twenty twenty three.
Okay. I, I, again, I, I, as I've said a couple of times this meeting, I, I represent the owners of Fifty Seven Terrace, who's that house right there? Most closest to the proposed sites on the proposed site to the north and northern end. So would it be possible to pull up the landscape plan and, and focus on that quickly? And I do appreciate some of the board members picking up on my client's concerns.
Uh, this plan or the, the, the colored rendering?
The, the colored one is, I think, easiest to digest.
One more. There you go.
Okay. The, I, I see about nine trees kind of closest to my client's property there. Is there any reason that can't be expanded? Both east and west to, to be, to block out more light and more noise presumably?
We can revisit the site when per, I, I have not been to the site since probably February. So things may have changed since then, but i- if there's more openings, we can revisit the site and see if there's, you know, some, some gaps there that, that we think we can fill. We could chat without, about the, with the client.
And, and those trees, what type of trees are those?
Evergreens, those would be like American hollies.
Do they do anything to improve the water runoff down that hill? That, that type of vegetation?
Um, I, I don't think it'll, I mean, if there's nothing there, then, then the leaves will capture some of the rain as it, before it comes down and gets there. But in terms of you know, the, the roots may absorb a little bit of the water, but you know, the, most of it's going to be. If it's going into the ground, it's going into the ground, so I, I don't think it's going to change the hydrology all that much.
And in, in planting those trees, is there some sort of cleanup that's going to, to occur around that site for what's already been damaged with the runoff? Or, or is it just? How, how to, to rephrase, how, how does, how does a planting site get prepped? Does, does stuff come out? Is there a clean? Does does stuff come out? Is there a cleanup done around that site? Or do we just dig holes and and plant?
There would be a little bit of a cleanup and then it would be a mulch bed underneath it.
Okay.
These would be full plant, full to the ground.
Would it be possible to consider some sort of multi-level or are these evergreens going to go all the way? The foliage on the evergreen is going to go all the way to the ground, basically. And then up and then how high can we expect these trees to be?
They'll go full to the ground. When they're planted, they will be full to the ground. And they'll probably be about eight feet tall. And when they continue to grow, they'll grow to fifteen fifteen feet or so.
And the the lighting that's going to be incorporated there, are these trees going to be above the the line for that lighting?
I think that was. For now, the the lighting is is coming from the building, so it's going to come to the trees and the trees will basically block a lot of the light spillage. Any light that might be going over over the curb line there, these trees would would block some of that.
So we would just ask that you consider expanding both west and east, putting as much foliage there as possible.
Okay, we'll talk to the client about that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a question about how are you going to maintain? And I asked earlier, can you use natural rainwater to water these plants and trees? Or how will they be maintained?
We were still working out whether or not we want to do irrigate a lot of the the different islands and and planting throughout. Even if we we choose not to irrigate, usually we put a guarantee on whoever installs them. The planting come with a guarantee so that they have to maintain and water the contractor has to maintain and water the trees for at least the first year. Whether they're bringing a truck, a watering truck there to do that, or we may, like we did along the front last fall, install an irrigation system. We're still deciding on on how to how to do that.
Okay, because part of the part of the overall plan is that these be maintained in perpetuity. So that will eventually be a condition of the application, although it'll be brought to the board to vote on. So you guys are going to have to figure out how to make that happen because we like the green. And if it's only there for a year, it's not so good. So we're looking at this.
That's just that, that's just the contractors guarantee beyond that. Then it becomes the owner's responsibility and they will maintain it.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make that a condition eventually, I believe. We'll ask the board. The second thing is what's going to happen with snow removal? Where is it? Is it going to be put on the island? Or how is snow removal going to occur?
You know, that's really a question for Mr. Delaney rather than Mr. Welsh.
Okay, so will Mr. Delaney be back at the next meeting?
I believe he will.
Okay, good. So we'll ask him to come up with a so a reasonable solution. Okay, do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Welch about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do have a few. We're going to go to Mary next. Okay, Mary, whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to ask about.
Please state your name, please, please state your name for the record, please.
Mary Delaney.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question about the courtyard. You talked about courtyard with some seating areas. Possibly, is that? Yeah, is that between like Whole Foods and Target or?
No, buildings A and B are the newest buildings on the north edge of the property.
Over by Mavis Tires?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, my question is, if, I don't know what businesses are going in there, but it looked like from the plan that I just saw that there were no trees there at all. Is there just shrubbery or is it just open?
There, there are two trees in there as well as some shrubs and ground covers in the courtyard.
Okay, because I thought no one would want to sit there if there's no shade at all. And then I wanted to just add my comment to one of the members who said that light expanse there and the the far side over by Eagle Rock in the parking lot. Again, it looks like just like a big asphalt jungle with no trees and as somebody who shops there often in this type of weather, your car bakes, you bake the whole, there's just, you can feel the heat. So any more trees that are added to that kind of area where the parking is would be greatly appreciated with islands or more tree islands, more shade.
Okay, thank you.
We'll consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Welch about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have a couple more. Next, we'll move on to Joyce.
Okay.
Joyce Rudin, I would like to know if you would consider planting native species in those islands that you said would be continually changed out. You mentioned something about cabbage plants, which are particularly unattractive, but native native plants attract butterfly butterflies and bees and are beautiful and are unique and would be a really nice complement to the reservation across the street.
Okay, we will, we will look a little bit more closely at you possibly switching out some of the plants for for native native plants. The the cabbages in those places were seasonal colorful highlights. We don't see a ton of native seasonal color as long lasting as some of those other ones, especially in New Jersey. So we'll look, we'll see what we can find.
If you if you plant a wall of pollinator plants, they will be tall and colorful and beautiful all through the season. I'd also like to echo what the the woman just said about the patio that you're planning that that really maybe has one tree on it. Can you consider planting more native trees on that area? Because it sounds to me like it's just more asphalt. Hello?
Okay, we will consider that.
It's a lot of impervious pavement.
They said they're going to consider it. Okay, is there a question? They said they're going to consider it. Thank you.
I also want to echo your your sentiments, Mr. Chair, that that there be irrigation system because one after one year, these trees will die.
They're going to consider that too from the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Welch on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Lastly, we have Sally.
Okay.
Polly Malanga, thank you. Mr. Welsh, are you familiar with goldenrod as a plant?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so it's, you would be familiar that it's from August through October, it is a bright yellow very vibrant plant that would be something you might consider. Would you be willing to consider that? It's native.
Yes, we would be willing to consider that. We just have to check the height. The areas where we're showing those those spaces are are very, you're in sight triangle, so we have to make sure the variety that we pick stays very low.
Certainly. How can you make pedestrians more comfortable traversing the parking lot in the areas that are lacking islands and shade trees?
Okay, do you have a question, Ms. Malanga?
I'm asking how he can make them more comfortable. There's certain areas that while this plan is is improved over what is there now, there are still vast areas of this parking lot that will not have shade. And I'm wondering how we can make make this a little bit more amenable to the current environment of climate change and and heat.
It it sounds like the applicant is going to be doing that and present new things at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. I did not hear that he was going to have more islands.
I I don't know if they are, but that's what we asked and they're going to go look into it. Is that correct, Mr. Welsh?
We'll talk to our engineers about that. And yes, we will, we will look into it.
So they're looking into it.
Oh, that's good to hear. I I just was wondering, how wide are these islands and will the trees be accommodated? Because I noticed at Essex Green, the islands there cause the trees to get quite stunted. Will our our islands in this in this shopping center be wider?
The island, the island width varies. Some of them are nine feet wide or wider. Some of them some of them do get narrow down to, I think, you know, six feetish, five, six feetish, which is is a little bit narrow, but we only have one tree in there. So the length that they have gives the roots a lot more room to to grow and spread out. So we didn't overpack them with with trees on purpose because we wanted, you know, the ones that we put there to have room to grow and to survive.
Okay, thank you very much for considering.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Welsh?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none. We're going to close this portion of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for extending the the time to allow us to get through the testimony tonight with Mr. Welsh. We'll consider the comments. Discuss it with Mr. Welsh, discuss with ownership. May have to discuss it with Whole Foods to make sure there's nothing in the lease that would prevent doing what you're you're asking in front of their store. But we will you know, we'll we'll address that and come back to you with those comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mees, unless there's anything else, I would recommend we carry this application to the August meeting.
That's August two?
Yes.
Yes. And there will be no need to renotice as we're carrying this to the next meeting.
And that's again, a virtual meeting like this?
Yes, it will be.
That's a regularly, it's regularly scheduled. It's not a special meeting. It's one of our regular already scheduled.
Okay, if anything changes, we will be in contact with Ms. McGovern.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for testifying this evening. I really appreciate it. Members of the board, I would like to know if you will be able to make a special meeting on Wednesday, August ninth at seven thirty via Zoom. Wednesday, August ninth, seven thirty via Zoom. If you don't know tonight, please contact Yamalat tomorrow because they need to know tomorrow. Please, we have to have a quorum. If you're sitting on the beach somewhere, take your laptop with you.
I can be there.
Thank you. Outstanding. I'll be there too. Okay, and the next regular scheduled planning board meeting will be Wednesday, August second, two thousand twenty three at seven thirty PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion. All, oh, council president seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes are above the nose. Thank you very much for staying. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Good one. Good night.
Night.